The board has an opportunity to review meeting minutes of April 16.
I want to start with the pledge allegiance.
Is there a lot of, um, because it's hard to hear, I'm sorry.
No, the gallery is not. All right, we start with the pledge allegiance, please join the board in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Should I begin to do the workshop discussion? All right. Uh, we are here this evening, uh, there aren't any applications before you this evening. We'll approve them and take care of some of the business. But since there aren't any applications, what we're going to be doing this evening is review of ordinance 2019 dash thirty-five. Uh, this application isn't here for the board's approval. And for my newer members, I know for the, for the older members, I'm going to bore you. For the newer members, let me explain our role. With regard to any development regulation that is produced in the Borough of Belmar, if it touches any development, touches redevelopment, touches anything that we're going to do that would come within the municipal land use, that application or that, excuse me, that ordinance is first given a first reading before mayor and council. They are the, they're the governing bodies. We don't approve ordinances, but our role is basically to review the ordinance, usually between first and second reading. Our role is fairly well described in the municipal land use law at, uh, section twenty-six of title forty-four, title fifty-five, forty, twenty-six. Basically, our role, we, we act as the governing bodies, if you will. Probably the best analogy is sort of their legislative committee. And our role is to tell the governing body, look, this either fits within the master plan or if it doesn't fit within the master plan, basically explain why it doesn't fit within the master plan to the governing body. What does that, what does that, what impact does that have on the governing body? Well, if it, if we simply say, look, this fits within the master plan, we produce a writing and tell them, you know, why it does or whatever. If it doesn't fit within the master plan, we tell them that also. And the impact on the governing body is if it fits within the master plan, it passes by the simple majority. They have a quorum there, the majority. If it doesn't, they need the heightened vote requirement. All right? And the heightened vote requirement, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that if we don't like it, um, just being sort of glib, so to speak, we don't like it. Doesn't mean it doesn't get passed, it just means it changes the voting requirement at the governing body. Now, having said that, uh, we have over the years, in addition, to identifying that it does or doesn't pass, uh, meet the master plan, we've also noted, because we do act as a legislative committee, here are some areas of concern that we may have. And I, I think that's legitimate to say, all right, you know, in the first instance, uh, mixed-use development in commercial area. Clearly, over the, over the years, we've had different things in our master plan to govern those things. But if you still have some concerns about this particular plan or this particular ordinance, you can still tell them. What do we have before us this evening? Um, we have members of the, of the community, for newer members. Some time ago, uh, at block ninety-five, uh, over a series of different meetings, we took a look at the parcel there. And, and Ms. Bell is here this evening, I'm sorry, this is our planner. Uh, she had a very large role in designing the plan. But some time ago, we took a look and we had public hearings to determine whether or not these parcels, and there are several blocks, I think there's five, seven, and then there's sort of thirteen through ten. I think even when we took a look at one, um, we even recommended, again, going back to a development regulation, we recommended two additional lots to sort of square off the property and made a determination, a series of different hearings, and they're referenced in your work, in, in the resolution, and, uh, Ms. Bell may reference them during the course of the meeting. But basically saying, yes, this area meets the redevelopment criteria that we were given. We had a series of hearings, we had professionals present why they felt it met the criteria of a redevelopment area. In each and every instance, we found that it did. Okay, that's good. Now what happens? It goes back to mayor and council, they take a look at what we made by way of our recommendation. If they decide to, okay, they originally sent it to us for that review. If they accept that review unchanged, they now designate that area as an area in need of redevelopment or that meet the criteria. This is sort of the second, second step in the process, if you will, because the next step that happens, and again, we're not, we're not dealing with the entire parcel. It appears that we are just dealing with two lots in the parcel at block ninety-five. Uh, two lots, I think it's five and seven. Now the governing bodies that has come back and said, okay, it meets the criteria. They've now drafted what's known as a redevelopment plan. Now that's in need of redevelopment, what do we want to see or how do we want to see this develop? And that's what we're looking at tonight. Uh, we do this in a public forum, we take public comment on it when it's appropriate. As to what they're doing, this is in, this is not technically, you know, you may be familiar with the Seaport Redevelopment Plan. This is kind of what we're doing, but in a different section. This is not in the redevelopment area. This is still going to be in the CBD zone. But where there is a conflict with the CBD one, right, CBD one zone, where there's a conflict with the CBD one zoning criteria, if ultimately this plan is approved, it will be this plan which then governs those two lots in this area. We're not looking at the entire parcel, just those two lots from the redevelopment plan. As to, as to the rationale as to why it's only two or not two, I'm not sure to that, Ms. Bell may have some information on that. But clearly, this is just dealing with block ninety-five, uh, lots five and seven. The governing bodies coming back, they're, they're giving you what? Lot size they're proposing, they're giving you height of a building, they're giving you parking requirements. And, and if I were to sort of, and again, it's not my place to do this, just try to give you an analytical frame. You're somewhere, in my view, sort of between the Seaport Redevelopment criteria and the CBD one criteria. There's, there's a couple of things that are, are similar to both of those. There's a couple of things that are slightly different, with regard to those matters. And Ms. Bell is going to give you basically what these requirements are and hopefully give you some type of idea of where this property is, if this property is built and someone builds to this criteria, what kind of development can we see there? What is going to be the proposed permitted uses? I, I will suggest to you that, that the proposed permitted uses seem to be consistent with what's presently there. It's still a mixed-use property. So, basically, that's what we're doing. We're going to hear from Ms. Bell, she's going to explain that to us this evening. As, as we often do, there'll be give and take with, with, with the, with the board. We'll open it up for public comment, any concerns they have. This is, this is their hearing too, uh, to let you know how maybe they feel about this. But again, as I say, our role at the end of the night is going to be, we're going to ask for a resolution, you know, does this or does this not fit within the master plan? And then if there are additional comments or additional concerns, maybe we hear something that we agree with, even if we don't agree with it. In the past, in other boards, I've still mentioned those types of concerns that we heard during our meeting. Not that we're redesigning it to say, you know, during our hearing, we heard the following concerns, want to share those with mayor and council. Present that in a writing to them. And then they move forward. If, as I said before, if it meets with the master plan, then it's just a, a normal majority, majority of the quorum is present. Otherwise, it's a heightened vote requirement. Any questions for me as to what we're doing this evening or what, what role we're playing?
In terms of the ordinance, what I understand as a proposed resolution is...
I'm going to ask you to keep your voice up, because people have already let us know they, it's hard for them to hear in the back, so if you can be...
Uh, I had a question in terms of the resolution and the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan addresses lots, uh, it looks like seven and five.
Yes.
But the ordinance refers to lots fourteen and fifteen behind Taylor. So I'm not quite sure what the, and...
I think the ordinance, the ordinance gives...
I understand that it's moving lots into, including those lots into that square block that is...
Sure.
I wasn't quite sure how the redevelopment's going, maybe Ms. Bell can...
Why don't we hold that until we get to that point?
Sure, sure, I, 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 I give you a partial explanation. I, I give a partial explanation that may put it in perspective. I think the, the ordinance itself does several things. It references the progression of what the approvals were along the way. I, I, I think as you take a look at the, the ordinance itself, and I'll leave this to Ms. Bell, see if she agrees or disagrees. But in a sense, the ordinance is giving you the history of how did we get here to create this? And they do mention that, that the government, that we at one point in time had recommended two parcels be added to it. But I, I believe our charge this evening is only with regard to lots five and seven, because that's what the plan references. But I think the ordinance itself referenced a progression of how we got here.
So let's close out the workshop portion of weekend.
Close out the...
Good?
I'm done.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the November eighth, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Borough of Belmar Planning Board. Uh, I'd like to begin with requesting an approval and waiving the reading of the minutes from the September sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Can I have a motion? Mr. Burke, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Campbell, thank you. Standing in, Doug.
Sorry, Mr. Lindsay.
I'm abstaining, I'm, I'm no, I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining.
Abstained? Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Ms. Swann?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wizzitello?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
I'm abstaining.
Sal? I'm sorry, Mr. Marchese?
Marchese.
You have to abstain, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay? And our chair, Mr. Bitterman?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. The minutes, minutes have been approved.
Okay. Uh, no applications this evening, so we'll move right into the review of the ordinance. Uh, Ms. Bell, I'm going to put, uh, you, uh, on the table, our borough planner. If you would, uh, please, uh, give us a little more background and if you would, address the question that was raised and then we could move through the presentation.
Sure. Um, good evening, I'm Christine Bell, I'm the Borough's Planner. Um, so, a little background on this redevelopment plan. As your lawyer stated earlier, um, in two thousand and seventeen, the mayor and council requested that the planning board, um, conduct an investigation study to determine if block ninety-five, lots five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and then later amended that to add in fourteen and fifteen, uh, met the criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. Uh, this includes, um, all of the lots on the east side of Main Street, between Tenth and Ninth Avenue, and then, um, basically a lot east of that on either side. It's a little bit hard to see.
Do we need to mark this exhibit?
We can mark it, we'll mark that as planning board one. The aerial.
Uh, this is just for your reference. Um, it's a little bit hard to see on the aerial, I have another map underneath it, which might be easier. But the orange outline is the Seaport redevelopment area. Um, this black hash is the area that was designated, um, in need of redevelopment. And then the two lots in red are the subject of the redevelopment plan. Um...
So we'll call this planning board two.
Next exhibit. Next document colorized rendered, PV two.
I'm not sure if this one's any, I don't know what one is easier for you guys to see, but there's a lot of colors in this one. But this is the property class. Um, the same thing, the redevelopment, the Seaport redevelopment area, uh, the block ninety-five designated area, and then the two lots.
So all the color shading design makes a different...
Right, so red is, uh, commercial properties. Uh, yellow is one to four family residential. Um, the light blue is public school. Um, the dark blue is just publicly owned property. The green is, uh, churches and other charitable property. And then these black are the existing building footprints on them.
Great, thank you.
Just so you're all familiar with the area. Um, so on September eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, uh, this planning board held a public hearing and, um, adopted a resolution endorsing the findings of the designation study and recommended that the area be designated in need of redevelopment. Um, on October seventeenth, twenty seventeen, the area was declared in need of redevelopment by the mayor and council. And that's just kind of the process it goes through to get these things. Um, as I just stated, uh, this plan only focuses on two of the lots that were designated within that area, lots five and seven. Um, we wanted to, although the other lots had been designated, there was really only a vision for these two. Um, and we wanted to leave the remainder of the area unconstrained for a future redevelopment plan or plan amendments. Um, you know, that came to fruition as a, at a later date. Uh, so blocks, uh, block ninety-five, lots five and seven in total are point five-two-six-nine acres. Um, and it's located at the, uh, northeast, no, the southeast, sorry, the southeast corner of Main Street and Ninth Avenue. It's the, uh, Bank of America Building and the lot behind that. Um, the underlying zoning is currently, uh, the CBD one central business, um, zone district. A redevelopment plan, just, um, just to kind of tell you what a redevelopment plan requires, um, is that it includes an outline for the planning, development, redevelopment, rehabilitation of the area. Um, the goal of this plan for these two lots was to provide a certain development criteria that's cohesive with the adjacent Seaport Redevelopment Plan and the goals and objectives of the Borough's planning, uh, documents. Uh, the plan seeks to create a vibrant mixed-use area on Main Street that is beneficial to the resident, to residents and tourists, similar to the Seaport, uh, redevelopment plan. Um, I have, just, uh, state, I'll give this to you. Um, I made a chart of the relevant bulk standards from the CBD one zone district and then what's proposed in the plan.
The chair's permissional mark, that PV three.
Thank you.
So, um, just to go through this, uh, the underlying zoning permits a minimum lot area of seventy-five hundred square feet. Uh, this redevelopment plan, uh, lowers that slightly to seven thousand square feet. But the two lots in the zone district, um, in the redevelopment plan are already, you know, existing sites. Um, both require a lot frontage of fifty feet and a front yard setback of zero. Um, the CBD one zone district, uh, requires a side yard setback of zero feet with a ten-foot step, step, setback if it's a budding or residential zone district. In this plan, uh, we're permitting a zero foot, also permitting a zero foot side yard setback. But if it's a budding residential, um, we're requiring a thirty-foot, uh, setback. Um, for the rear yard setback in the underlying zoning, uh, ten feet, um, is the minimum required, twenty-five feet if it's a budding residential. Uh, this redevelopment plan is requiring thirty feet, um, of budding or residential zone district. So, uh, this plan is actually requiring that, uh, buildings be stepped back further from, uh, residential zoning than the underlying zoning as it currently is today. Um, the maximum building height in the CBD one zone district is forty-five feet or four stories. Um, we are permitting one extra foot, um, in the redevelopment plan, forty-six feet. Uh, and that's because we are permitting, um, interior first level parking. And so, just to give a little extra wiggle room, uh, for parking. And a maximum building, uh, height of four stories also. So that is not much different. Um, the CBD one, uh, zone district, uh, permits a maximum impervious coverage of up to one hundred percent. We've got these ten percent of the lot, uh, reserved for landscaped areas. Um, the redevelopment plan, uh, permits what existed prior to the redevelopment or eighty percent. Um, and this is in a caper zone, so we would have to abide, the redevelopers would have to abide by caper standards also. Um, the maximum floor area ratio in the CBD one zone district is two-point-zero. Um, and in the redevelopment plan, it's also two-point-zero, but it's calculated as a ratio of the project total. So that means that if there was a building that crossed both, uh, lots, it would be calculated as a total, as the total of the whole area and not each lot separately. Um, parking requirements, the boroughs, uh, non-res, the borough for a one-bedroom garden apartment, which would be permitted in this above retail number of office space on the first floor. Uh, the parking requirement is one-point-eight spaces for a one-bedroom and two spaces for a garden, two spaces for a two-bedroom. Um, and for non-residential uses, I threw in, you know, what, what the borough standards are similar to some of the uses that are permitted in the zone. Uh, so an office space requires four-point-five spaces per one thousand gross square foot, um, gross floor area, sorry. And a retail store requires, uh, one space per two-hundred feet of gross floor area. The redevelopment plan, um, is permitting one space per, or end or one point, one space per bedroom and or one-point-five spaces per unit. So that means that every unit has a minimum of one-point-five spaces. Um, but if it's a two-bedroom unit, they're required to provide two spaces. But a one-bedroom unit would be required to provide one-point-five. So those are a little bit less than what the borough standards are, um, which is based on, uh, the RSI standards. Um, for the non-residential uses in the redevelopment plan, uh, the, we're permitting two spaces per one thousand square feet of, uh, gross floor area. But the thought behind this was that, um, residential uses would have a higher parking demand at nighttime hours when people, you know, return from work, things like that. And during the day, when the, um, non-residential uses on the first floor, um, were being, you know, operated, either people were in offices or visiting retail stores, um, there wouldn't be as high a demand for the, uh, residential uses, so they could kind of share some of the parking. Um, just one thing to note, so while these standards in the redevelopment plan are lower than, um, the residential site improvement standards, uh, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, which is the state, um, department that's responsible for putting out those, uh, parking standards, has encouraged, uh, communities, um, proximate to transit, which Belmar has, you know, the train station just a few blocks away from the site, to encourage less parking, um, that's then is traditionally required in more suburban communities that don't have access to public transit. Um, so we felt that this was kind of promoting that. So those are just, uh, some of the big bulk standards. Uh, the permitted uses for this site are very similar to, um, the Seaport redevelopment area uses and also the uses in the underlying zone. Um, it's a variety of commercial uses, including, uh, restaurants and group hubs, but excluding fast food, um, indoor/outdoor farmers and Seaport, uh, seafood markets, art studios, galleries and craft shops, uh, performing art theaters, antique shops, bookstores, gift novelty and souvenir shops, cafes, candy confectionery and ice cream shops, uh, bicycle rental or sales, camera and photography supply stores, professional and general offices, real estate and travel agencies, uh, municipal offices and services, indoor and outdoor recreation and community facilities, uh, retail clothing stores, hobby shops, sporting good apparel and equipment, uh, pharmacy health and beauty supplies, personal service establishments, including hair and nail, uh, wax and lashes salons, uh, cigar shops, and, uh, residential dwelling units, uh, provided they consist of market rate and affordable units. If affordable units are not provided on-site, uh, the developer is required to contribute to the Borough's Affordable Housing Trust fund. Um, and if a building contains residential units fronts on Main Street, uh, the residential units are restricted to the second floor or above. Um, and then permitted accessory uses, uh, are parking, trash and recycling facilities and storage and maintenance facilities. So that would be ancillary to the permitted uses. Um, those are the, the general, I think, bulk requirements, permitted uses of the zone. The redevelopment plan has a number of design standards also. They are very similar to the Seaport Redevelopment's plan. Um, we wanted to continue that, uh, uh, Seaport aesthetic throughout the downtown, um, and make sure, uh, Main Street was cohesive, uh, in any redevelopment that was happening. Um, there is a section in the redevelopment plan of how, uh, we think it's consistent with, uh, the Borough's planning documents, um, starting with the nineteen-eighty-nine master plan, um, that the central business district will provide a core area of downtown-type development, including such uses as offices, business services, specialty shops, banks and financial services and restaurants. The district will allow for structures with heights of three to four stories, uh, gesturing traffic to flow through the area and parking around the perimeter. Um, the district would complement the adjacent marine commercial district and provide for overflow parking and additional nighttime activities for residents. Um, you got more things from the two thousand and sixteen, uh, reexamination report. Uh, apartment residence is above commercial structures, has been incorporated as a permitted use in the Borough's development regulations, um, in the CBD one zone district. Um, these use, also referred to as mixed use, should be encouraged throughout the current commercial districts to build higher density that supports a strong diversified economy and user base. Um, and to revitalize the central business district by exploring economic initiatives such as business improvement districts, rehabilitation area designations, and the cultivation of a cultural tourism development strategy. So this is in our redevelopment area. Um, do you have any questions for me? Just wanted to go over this quickly.
I think we can roll down the board if you want, why don't we start?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
In, in terms of, uh, the, uh, parking, which is, uh, always a concern, especially when we have increased densities, that what was the basis for downsizing the number of spaces per unit from one-point-eight to, uh, one-point-five for a, uh, efficiency of a one-bedroom unit? And in light of that, tie that into the overflow parking, which was, I think the ordinance says public parking within five-hundred feet. Could we consider overflow?
So the, let me get to that, um, exact section for you.
I'll finish that question, part of the question, yeah.
Right. Um, so I think what you're referring to says that, um, there's a few, there's a variety of ways for which parking can be provided. Um, and how the developer and the borough, uh, determine, comes to an agreement about how parking will be provided, that would be in, um, the redevelopers agreement, which is not really part of what we're talking about tonight. But they're able to, um, provide parking on-site, right? Um, they're also, um, able to, uh, provide, uh, spaces... Um, they're also, um, able to, uh, provide, uh, spaces on publicly owned property that the bur, um, under the control of the borough with prior agreement. So that would mean if there's, you know, a parking lot next to their site or something and they make an agreement with the borough to maybe, uh, repave it or something like that, the borough might let them add additional spaces there. Um, and they're also able, if the borough decides they would permit them to, another ability would be to, um, create new on-street parking spaces adjacent to the redevelopment, except on Main Street. Um, but these are all things, you know, they need to provide the spaces and it's up to the borough to determine how they do that.
And, uh, this may be for, uh, Mr. Kovacs to respond.
Nick, could you just talk a little more?
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, in terms of, I have, I can do that. I can do that real well sometimes. I have to think about it. Uh, in terms of the resolution and the approval of the plan and, and all that, this more or less gives the, uh, the borough and the council the authority to work an agreement out with the developer?
Yes, generally any, any redevelopment plan, uh, will require an agreement with the redeveloper. Because and there, there, sometimes there's arrangements there as to, as, as the spell is explained. How are you going to provide for that parking if you're not providing it on, on-site? Or where is that parking going to be? Because generally speaking, generally speaking, once you have the redevelopment plan, you don't come back for variance for it. This then governs.
Right.
So usually if you have those kinds of detail, let's say the person says, well, I can get somebody here and they reach an agreement with the municipality in accordance with one of the other provisions of our existing ordinances that you can make provision with the governing body as to where you may locate or where you'll provide other parking, that would be part of the redevelopment agreement between the developer and the municipality.
And then still along the lines of the parking for the retail area. Uh, with regarding to, with regard to the parking in the retail areas, uh, there is a down, downsizing of the requirement for parking from one, one space per 200 feet of floor area to 1,000. And I see the, the weekday basis for that, uh, and how the DCA and the residential site improvement standards all come together. However, uh, do you feel as a planner with weekends where if these are restaurants, some restaurants are something like that and there's lines to get in and people tend to work Monday through Friday, you know, weekend is the crunch in the summertime for parking. So, uh, any, uh, any thoughts on, you know, the basis for this variant, change from 200 to 1,000 square feet?
Um, so, so just to clarify, uh, it's two per 1,000, so that would be one per 500.
Oh, okay, no, that's.
So it's still, it's still less parking, but it's not as much less as I think you originally thought. And I think, um, that just given the location of the site, uh, given the size of the area and the uses that could kind of go in, you know, um, if you think about the Bank of America building as it is today, it's not a large building really, right? Um, I think that this parking, uh, would be sufficient in, in the summer on a weekend. Do you live there?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, please. Thank you. Mr. Park, please.
Yes, I have, uh, I guess three questions. First question is, the first comment and question, 30-foot setback adjacent residential.
Correct.
Which lot eight would be, I believe I read, uh, adjacent to the, is that as residential?
Right, so this lot, if you can see, so.
Lot eight is.
Lot four, um, I believe you mean.
Lot, lot, uh, six, uh, four, yeah, lot.
Lot four.
Four and five.
So there would be a 30-foot setback from lot four to any development on lot five.
Can you describe, not so much for me, but for perhaps all the people in the audience, what would be, what typically would the 30-foot setback look like to those people?
So it's a 30-foot building setback. Um, there are some additional requirements in, um, in here. Um, a six-foot fence would be required at, along the property line. And then I believe it's a three-foot setback to any, um, parking area. And that was to be able to provide sufficient parking on-site, um, with, while still maintaining a buffer between the residential areas.
Okay. Now, on the, uh, other side of the lots, uh, I believe eight and nine, it calls for a zero setback in a, in a commercial zone, correct?
So right now, if you look, um, there currently is a zero-foot setback between, uh, lot seven and lot eight. Right. They're attached.
Lots, uh, however, building lots eight and nine, uh, but this lot five, both of those, both of the buildings on those two lots have rear entrances. And with a zero setback, what is that going to do to their, uh, being able to get into their establishment from the rear?
Um, so that is.
That's something that's going to have to take care of in a redevelopment plan?
So I, the way this is intended to be, the way is, the redevelopment plan is intended, um, I don't think that there would be a building right up against that lot, uh, the back lot, the lot five, um, parcel. Um, but that certainly, I think, is something that you could, uh, recommend the council.
And Tom, that could be noted as a point of concern, as Doug had highlighted, so.
Yes, sir.
It's not only the entry, but the zero lot area.
My next question for you has, in, in your experience, has there ever been any consideration in the parking requirements to have any parking requirements for employees of the commercial establishments?
So those are part of the.
So they're included in the, the two.
Yes.
So essentially what you're saying is the employees take the parking and the customers have no place to park?
Well, it's also, it's part of the standard that's established of.
I know, I know.
Well, let's try to keep the sarcasm at, let's deal with the questions and facts.
Okay.
So I think that, um, any commercial square footage would be greater than 1,000 square feet. So I, you know, I can't tell you what will be there, um, but I imagine there will be more than 1,000 square feet of commercial, uh, space. And I think there will be sufficient parking for both, um, employees and patients.
There's. I'm reading my sarcasm.
Just ask, just ask the question.
Parking has always been an issue.
Yeah, it is, it's an issue for all of us and an issue for the town, quite frankly, so. I don't, was there, I thought you had a third question?
That was, okay, that was mine.
Comment slash question?
That was on my side.
Thank you very much, Mr. Park. Mr. Olentz, please.
Um, I, I really have no questions at this point. I want to, might want to come back. But again, just clearly the parking seems to be a, a theme that I think many people in this room will keep an eye on, and need to keep an eye on. But if I have a question at all, I'll raise my hand a little while.
Thank you. Ms. Wayne?
I have the same questions. It was the parking that really concerned me. Um, also you have the, um, what was it, the side, side yard setbacks. Uh, right now, is that building stands? There is room between the building and the sidewalk.
Between, on.
On nine.
Right, correct.
As a garden.
Right, there's to be retained.
Um, so I can't tell you if the, uh, building, if the garden will be retained, uh, but the, uh, you know, whatever is there cannot, the borough owns the sidewalk, so that will remain. Um.
Okay, I understand. We don't, okay, thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
I would ask, is there any questions for later?
Absolutely. Just let Mr. Olentz come back whenever he wants, anyone on board.
Okay, yes, I have one question. East side of lot five and seven are residential homes?
Yes. Uh, the east side of lot five.
Five and not seven.
Uh, lot five is east of lot seven.
Right. And this is a four-story building?
Uh, it would be permitted to be up to four stories, which is what is permitted there now. So the increase in height would be one foot, the increase in permitted height is one.
Because of parking underneath?
Uh, parking, yes, because we're permitting from parking underneath.
That's right.
Thank you. Mr. Riz, tell him.
Um, my concerns are the parking also, uh, and the concerns are the height of the building because I, I am a fireman in a, you know, a four-story building. That's a little hard. So I'm going to listen a little more. See what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
My question?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my question has to do with the maximum floor area ratio, which basically is density. So in the existing CBD one, uh, the maximum floor area ratio is two. With the redevelopment plan, it's two, calculated as ratio of project total. So two-part question. How does the calculation differ? In other words, when you say calculated as a ratio of project total, how do you calculate that? Secondly, how will that affect the density? Other words, will it increase the normal CBD one FAR of two? Or will that effect be increased?
So the way, uh, good question, the way the, the underlying zoning is, you could have a building on lot five and a building on lot seven, each with a, um, floor area ratio of two. And, you know, you may or may not be able to get parking, say, on the site, but if they were going to the parking variance or something, you could have two buildings with, um, that density hypothetically. Um, what this does is it permits them, we're using the whole, um, both lots, kind of calculating it together, they could have, say, a greater floor area ratio on maybe lot five, the one facing Main Street, and then have more open space, more area for parking, things like that, um, mostly on lot seven.
So in other words, you combine even two lots to figure it out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, it may allow them the ability to, to kind of reduce some of the massing or something to, to offset that in a combined way.
Right.
Any other questions? No? Uh, I, I just wanted to confirm a few things I heard in terms of CBD one versus redevelopment. So side yard setback in CBD one, it's 10-foot adjacent to residential. Versus redevelopment moves that up to 30-foot setback.
Correct.
To building?
Correct.
Okay. Um, rear, rear yard setback, um, 25 feet when abutting residential and resident, or the redevelopment's at 30 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and for some reason CBD was at 45 feet where redevelopment's one foot taller, 46. So 46 feet is permitted.
So, um, and just to clarify that, I just put like the maximum standard in here. If a building has existing parking, it's permitted to be, uh, not existing, if a building has interior parking, um, it's permitted to be up to 46 feet in the redevelopment plan. If there is no parking provided in the interior of the building, um, the maximum height is 40.
All right, drops down?
Right.
That's a good one though. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kovacs, any questions, please?
Yeah, just a couple of, uh, quick questions. Given, given the present configuration of the two lots for which this plan is, is designed, frontage depth, what would be the maximum number of lots that could be developed at the site? I know presently there are two, but given frontage requirements and the 7,000 square foot area, what would you envision a, a maximum build-out without variances to be?
Um, I don't, so you're asking if they can subdivide the lot?
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm imagining if you have, if under this plan, if you put it all into one ownership and you could, I'm just trying to figure out how many total number of lots you could configure of 7,000 square feet meet the frontage requirements. I know you've got two now. It looks like one lot is significantly bigger than the other lot.
I don't think you could, uh, subdivide. So I don't know off the top of my head, but.
You don't think you can get three conforming lots?
No.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head though, so.
That's, that's, all right, no, I, but I, I accept this. In the, in the Seaport Redevelopment Program, um, we do have street fronting properties at 7, 7,000 for minimum lot area. But in terms of, there's several questions with regard to that. Do we have the same type of step-back and set-back requirements as we do in the Seaport? Where basically if you're farther back from what you might otherwise, that they give you a little bit of a bonus to go higher? Does that exist in this instance?
No.
No.
But, but it's not, the Seaport redevelopment area is much larger.
Correct.
Um, than this area, so in this, you know, small, uh, square footage, there's not really the opportunity to consider that.
It doesn't present a. I also note that in the Seaport Redevelopment Zone, we give, we give sort of, uh, I want to say this incorrectly, but basically, we would not calculate floor area ratio if, make sure I read correctly. Floor area ratio shall not apply where developers provide enclosed parking on-site for these all-reserved parking spaces for residential units. Is there a similar configuration for this?
So, uh, floor area ratio, the way this redevelopment plan is written, every building needs to meet a floor area ratio standard, but interior parking is not calculated in them because it's not adding more, it's kind of like double counting for this, right?
Well, as I say, at the Seaport, we're not going to, we're not going to require you, we're not going to hold you to the FAR requirements if you provide interior parking for each one of your residential units in a sense. The configuration of the Seaport or if, if it were built out to use that formula. And we have some of the buildings already. You basically have on the first floor, which is why we also gave a, a sort of a height vary, or a height bonus, if you will, is because you have all the parking on that lower ground level.
Right.
And I agree that would be a double counting if we held to the floor area, but since you're already providing all the parking for the residential units sort of on your ground floor and then you're building higher, you can have some storefronts in the front of that, but the back of that sort of allows the parking. Is there a similar plan for this development?
So similarly, there needs to be commercial uses, you know, along the frontage, um, at least along Main Street. If you are providing interior parking, the parking does not count towards the floor area ratio, but the building, with the exception of the parking, needs to meet the floor area ratio.
So you don't have a waiver like you have in the Seaport for floor area ratio?
Correct.
Okay.
The only thing you're highlighting is that the actual area of the parking is not part of the calculation.
Right.
Right?
So if you had, if you had a four-story building, the FAR applies to the other three stories above. Whereas in the Seaport, if we were, well, we don't allow you to go, we only allow you to go three and a half. But in that instance, no floor area ratio applies if you provide that parking. Here, you do both, in a sense, you can, but it's not calculated with the other floors. You still need to meet your FAR.
Right, so you would calculate, you know, any commercial space and then the residential space for the floor area ratio.
And, and you mentioned before CAFRA standards. Are they applicable here?
Uh, I believe they're applicable to all of them.
Well, yeah, I, I just, I rarely ask a question. I don't know the answer to it. But for purposes of, of the public hearing, the CAFRA standards would still apply to this property. We'd still have, the developer would still have to meet those standards.
Correct.
There's no exception for this.
Yeah, no, no exception for this property, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I just ask one more?
I haven't finished my job yet.
What I have in my head. On the, in the, on the existing lots, I note that the maximum pervious coverage is, you know, what existed prior to redevelopment, eighty percent. Are, are, do we basically consider any paved area or any impervious, it's impervious coverage, you would agree with me?
Correct.
So at this point in time, are both of those lots pretty much going to be able to build to the one hundred percent?
I'm not an engineer.
Okay.
So I could not tell.
Well, I'm assuming that there's, assuming that they're covered either with pavers or building, they're gonna, they're gonna be at the hundred percent though, if that's so.
If they're one hundred percent impervious now, then they would be...
Then they'll be able to, okay.
Correct. And this, that redevelopment plan standard is the same as in the Seaport redevelopment.
Now, so you raise an interesting point. My point is, so my question is this. How does redevelopment plan compare to the CBD one zone? But how does it also compare to the Seaport redevelopment plan? How is it different? There's a big difference.
So I did not compare the two of them, because this is not in the Seaport redevelopment plan. They are similar. I think that the inspiration for the, kind of the bones of this plan was the Seaport redevelopment plan. The design standards are very similar. And then some of the both standards were tweaked a bit to be specific to this.
It doesn't vary that much. The reason I'm asking that is because we don't want different specifications for different, you know, CBD one, Seaport redevelopment, development, you know?
Right, they're certainly similar. You know, as we just pointed out, the floor area ratio is stricter in this plan. I did not compare all of the standards to them, so I can't specifically answer any of them. And I know the parking requirements, the ability to provide for parking in different ways with the borough's agreement, that is the same as in the Seaport redevelopment plan.
Any other questions before I close out? Board questions?
Yeah, I do.
Good.
Thank you.
Please speak up.
In terms of the, the planting area that's along the side of the building and by providing a three-foot setback from the parking to the fence, that's a spot where if there's no bumpers or anything like that provided, the vehicles could pull up to the curb, be very close to the fence, and whatever green strip might be there is pretty covered. So I think that there should be some consideration given to that, the parking setback, so that there could be some vegetation that would grow along the fence as opposed to some lawn area that would be hard to maintain if vehicles were hanging there.
Just so I'm clear, what are you proposing would be done there?
Uh, increase, increase the setback of the parking from the fence by several, like two or three feet.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm in agreement with that, so, okay.
So I think the reas, the reason, because we, we were trying to be, you know, very cognizant of the residential uses to the east of this site and make sure there was a significant buffer area, but how the three feet came to be agreed upon is I think we wanted to make sure the site had the ability to park, the required parking on it, based on, you know, a theoretical build-out and have safe drive aisles and things like that.
I think that's my concern, okay, is, is we're kind of fighting the parking battle at the same time. And I understand that it's going to be close and you're gonna have a buffer there. And I think, I think that three feet, look, a car curb, we could put a curb stop in front of that, there's gonna be Belgium block curb or something there. There could even be some greenery there that a car bumper would go up against and are providing or something like that, so. I think there could be something there, but I don't want to take away from parking just to try to create additional buffer there when we're really struggling, all of us, or at least the comments I've heard have been about parking here thus far.
Very true, and they're trying to do a lot, and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's the unfortunate part.
And if we have wall stretchers, we can do more. And in terms of, in terms of stormwater management, because the CAFRA rules apply there, do you know if there is a detention requirement to go into the municipal drainage system?
I'm not an engineer, so I don't know very much about stormwater. But I am sure whatever, you know, stormwater requirements would be for other developments, they would apply here also.
And, Mr. Campbell, would you mind if I asked a question in terms of, do you feel any problem? Do you have any concerns about drainage capacity along the streets in that area?
Not the way it is now, there is no problem there, so I don't know what they would be proposing, whatever's gonna be built there, or then again, it would be in the plans to make sure that there's either sufficient runoff or whatever it's going to be, again, but I don't know what they're gonna do, if they're gonna make it a hundred percent less, and then as we do with all buildings we hold, make sure that the water does not affect any neighbors or any of the other problems.
Understood.
And that could be a concern to note, that we just want to make sure that there's some accommodations with stormwater, whether it be, you know, rain guard or whatever, some means of trying to accommodate where we could rather than pushing it out, but it could be a comment.
It is a comment, not that we can solve, but it's something that be, gets addressed in the site plan and design phase.
This development, like all developments in Belmar, would have to meet the borough's stormwater requirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, getting back to parking a little bit. Refresh my memory. If you're gonna have parking in that space, what, how mu, um, what feet, how many feet do you allow for a car to be taken, you know, in a, say, an angled parking space? Is that fifteen, is what I recall, fifteen feet?
So it's a straight-in space, it's usually eighteen feet.
At this angle, that's fifteen feet, something like that?
Once again, she's not an engineer, so let's be careful.
My, what I'm thinking is this, the way that, the way that the building is configured with a zero rear setback, you can only go, you're gonna have to have in and out at the same location, you're gonna have to have two ways in and out, there's not, there's not gonna be a back exit, so. I'm just still not sure that thirty feet is even gonna be enough.
They may have to, your point is they may need to do the angled spots.
Right.
They may not have choice, and it's still...
If you take an angled spot, we're laying it back all the way out to the street, I mean, it's, it's...
This is all tight, I mean, hey, we need, you can see that, you know, you're trying, you're gonna try to rob Peter Paul to accommodate the parking, for lack of a better term, so. Calling attention to this right now, I think, is, is proper, so we can all, everybody in town can ride, earn on this and make sure that the parking is a priority, is focused upon, so comes out as best as it can come out. I'm not sure if we could wave a magic wand and make the globe orbit, it's not, it's not happening.
The wall stretcher is referenced.
Yeah. I'm riding my bike around town.
Any other questions before we close it out, over into the public? Yes, please, Mr. Burrow.
More stuff?
I believe so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, please. And for purposes of Mr. Burrow's question, I, I would draw everyone's attention to our existing ordinances, which require the size of the space for each off-street parking shall be at least nine feet in width by eighteen feet in length. Physical, handicap spaces have a different dimension. Miss Bell, you've made a very thorough study of our, I guess, the historical background to this, our reexamination reports, our master plan, how our reexamination reports have, in a sense, amended our master plan, I guess, going back two thousand, two thousand six, two thousand sixteen. A- as a plan, and I know there's, there's some differences in the ordinances. There's some differences in the ordinance and sort of what I'll characterize as the bulk requirements. But it has mixed-use development and sort of a consistent theme in our master plan since two thousand, two thousand six, about what, two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Do you see anything in your review of the plan that you've explained to us this evening, been part of development, anything that is inconsistent with the master plan that we should raise to the governing body's attention?
No.
Oh, there's two questions actually, under let this ring, ask her a question first, and then I have one I want to circle back to.
Yeah, Doug, you brought up a very good point, which could change the configuration of the parking, it's a handicap parking, because the handicap parking spaces are gonna take up a lot more. And what is the requirement now for handicap spots for the stores and businesses, apartments or whatever, so?
So there are, you know, the borough has parking requirements, there's state, there's ADA, you know, parking requirements, and they would all need to be met in terms of...
Which is to take into consideration, because of the, the size of the handicap parking spot, it's gonna take away from the eighteen-foot parking spot, so that's a consideration. Yep, thank you, thank you.
One question, Miss Bell. You had mentioned earlier on in your presentation about shared parking spots at of residential use, not retail, I'll call it, used during the day. Is that part of the calculations in the parking, or is that just in theory, we believe that would, that would...
So that, that is just ha, part of the calculations, you know, we use to come to the determination of what would be, you know, appropriate?
Yeah, because it's a mixed use, so I know we have a tendency to look at the uses in isolation rather than in combination, and I think there's benefit to be had there, although I don't know statistically what that is, but the mixed-use function, other than I think someone had mentioned weekends, which is always the problem, but it's a problem no matter what in Belmar, but there is some benefit to be had of that, that variation of use.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so all of that would be in the developer's agreement, which is, you know, beyond the scope of this plan.
But again, this is a redevelopment plan for proposal. If this is moved forward, one way or the other, left in the CBD one or in the redevelopment, it is up to the developer to then fit in the parking and everything else, as you said, with not only our regulations, but also ADA and all that.
Correct.
And this is just a guideline, then he has to make it fit, and what we're saying, whether it's eighteen or fifteen, he has to make that fit and make sure, or else the plan does not pass.
Correct. Typically, you don't get variances from a redevelopment plan.
That's my point, so he has to make it fit.
Otherwise, he's coming before this board with seeking a preliminary site plan approval and seeking potential variances that we would have to deal with.
That, okay, I would, I would suggest, and I wouldn't interrupt, I would suggest probably just get a technical review if you need variances, because your first technical review with commercials, that this fits within the redevelopment plan.
Correct. It's a very good point.
A lot of checks and balances being applied.
That was my point, that there are checks and balances, and he has to make the work, not us with the guidelines.
Right, and I think, you know, certainly your concerns about parking and how that fits into the developer's agreement are things you could know.
Note as concerns, though.
And we want to make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Final turn? Okay. All right, I'd like to open it up to the public for comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, spell your last name, and provide your street address.
The chair's, it could be comment or questions to the, to the panel.
Absolutely.
It can be comment or questions to the, to the planner also, if you have any questions.
Peter Terranova, eight hundred B Street.
Could you spell that, please?
T D lot far, A, it'll be it.
Thank you.
All right, first question.
Hi, Pete, is the microphone on?
No, I don't think so.
It's on, that's not on for recording? No, please speak up.
All right, which of this, this is one parcel, two lots, but it's still one parcel, correct? On the tax reference, lot seven and five are one piece?
I don't have knowledge of that.
They're two separate lots.
They're two separate lots.
So one block, two lots.
So with respect to lot five, that's the, the old drive-up window, correct?
Correct.
Which of those would then be considered the side yard setback? If these are two separate parcels, it fronts on Ninth Street. The side yard setback on the residential, would you tell me they have to step back thirty feet from there?
Correct.
How much of that lot would be left? Do you have any dimensions on it? I'm not sure.
I don't have dimensions on that. I believe the lot is about on the thirty-foot wide.
On Ninth?
Yes.
I don't believe so, I would double-check that number, number one, and hopefully that's a hundred-foot lot.
But it's a thirty-foot setback from that regardless, if it's, if it's a seventy-five, it's forty-five.
Is it one parcel or two? At one, then the side yard would be on Ninth, then?
No, they're two separate lots.
That's my point, chairman is that. If it were one parcel...
It is a hundred-foot wide.
It is a hundred-foot wide, then how many feet deep should we honor?
One fifty.
One fifty. The other issue is the parking. By reducing the parking standards, and that's what this is doing, it's going to increase the density on that property with the number of residential units that could be parked there. Comparing requiring one point eight, I know a number of the members on the board are concerned about it. Looking at one point eight per bedroom down to one point five, that increases the residential density on that lot. The developer who comes in, if he conforms to that standard, he doesn't need to get a variance for more units or less parking. That's the concern. As far as the commercial uses are involved, those of us, I retired to Belmar a few years back, I've come here before that, and unfortunately, I have to go to the right age a lot more often than I used to. I do enjoy going to Taylor, but it, it makes, parking has been difficult, even in the non-subjects. That's something that's... Four-story building, as I understand, is already permitted in that zone?
Correct.
The uses, no one's disputing, I understand the use of that.
Well, good, good news for you, pharmacies are now new permitted use in that area.
Well, there's already one four-story.
Uh-uh, that's one, I would, I would suggest that, that's probably, that's probably the one.
But the, the issue is one of the parking. Increases the density, no matter how you look at it, and we all know that that is a major problem. And I personally don't feel that that's the answer for that particular parcel. I am concerned by this particular one is being suggested out. It's like spot zoning, not something I'm in favor of. The Seaport development, I don't think needs to be considered as part of this, it's a separate item. And once you set this precedent, I don't think you're gonna be able to back away from it. When is the council meeting that actually, this will eventually be passed, when is that, the second reading?
December third.
December third, the second reading.
Will we be back? That's, that's, that's the meeting that, regardless of what this board does. Yours is primarily just a recommendation, it doesn't bind the council, am I correct?
I, I, I would characterize it not necessarily as a recommendation, but our findings as to whether or not it's inconsistent or consistent with the master plan and areas of concern, and as I've said before, we have in the past, even if it is a board comment, shared with mayor and council, these are the types of concerns that we've heard expressed by the citizens.
But it does not bind the council regardless of...
No, it changes up, a heightened vote requirement if for some reason it doesn't meet the master plan, it does not rewrite the ordinance or change it.
The council can change, can pass disorders regardless of the board's decision.
Correct, they're, they're the governing body.
So those that are concerned about that, that's very, really need to take their concerns down below. I'm sure the board's gonna listen.
Certainly gonna listen to everybody here.
I've heard a number of members here concerned about the parking and its impact, and that would be my concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Terri Lynch, eight hundred B Street, and I have a few comments.
Can you spell that, I just want to be clear for the record. Lynch?
Lynch, L-Y-N-C-H.
Thank you.
And I don't really have any questions, and I, I just wanted to make some comments to you. I've lived in Belmar since two thousand and five, and I love Belmar. And I believe that the development plan, I'm not an expert on all this, but the development... And I believe that the development plan, I'm not an expert on all this, but the development plan that I hear about, Seaport versus east of Main Street, it seems like there's a different personality. When you go west of Main Street, Marina, Seaport, east of Main Street, neighborhood, beach, it seems very different to me. And so I just wanted to voice two concerns I have. One is that I believe that the increased density really needs to be managed. And I, I, I really kind of don't mind the, you know, the, the extra people in town. I love the buzz of Belmar in the summer and the surfboards and all that. But I'm concerned about the density east of Main Street. I used to live at 601 Ninth Avenue, moved up to, a little bit to 800 B Street between Eighth and Ninth. And I, I'm concerned that the increased density east of Main Street really needs to be managed. And I'm not familiar with this four-story access, the four stories that's allowed currently east of Main Street. But what I would say is that, you know, we have a, like a neighborhood personality. And my wish for would be, you know, maybe something a little different, like a couple stories of townhouses there behind the bank, not some four-story increased density. Because I do, I am concerned about the parking and the density. The second concern that I have is the precedent. And I think if we set a precedent in these two lots, five and seven, and we go forward with this, all of a sudden, we're going to have higher density and higher structures that are allowed in lot five and seven. So once that's done, you know, they're going to come for lot, I don't know, X, Y, and Z and say, okay, we have it here. So I guess the bottom line is, I, my request is to please help manage the density of our town and consider Main Street personality. We know the internet has taken over a lot of our retail businesses and that's not going to happen or not going to bring all that back. So we need some, probably some residences there. And I'm not against that, but I, I'm hoping we can maintain a more neighborhood, Belmar, and a look like long range or past great parts of the town. So that's it, I just want to have a...
Listen, Shonkis, S H A R K U S, 404 Avenue. So Ms. Bell, you had mentioned that as a solution for overflow parking, there, they could possibly use publicly, publicly owned property. Could I ask where we might find some of that in, near the retail district?
So that is, that's not something they could just do. That is something that if the, the borough comes to an agreement with them, the borough designates an area that they could do that, that would be a decision that the borough and any potential developer would make and put in a redevelopment plan, in a redevelopment agreement.
So we could probably nowhere near Ninth and Main. Is that correct?
I think, Ms. Shonkis, this question, if I may, is based upon this parcel, where's, where's the nearest municipally-owned property that they might be applying?
No, across the street.
Right next to it.
Lot 14 is actually, I mean, it's likely a parking lot. So behind Taylor Harbor.
Pretty close.
My question then, is that the sign for Taylor as opposed to, it's public parking, but how many times are you going to recount the same spaces for a building?
Next question.
So, anyway, just something to consider, that you shouldn't be counting parking spaces twice in the summer. You can't get to any of the places downtown on the weekend and now you're going to double count parking spaces?
Let's understand, is there an agreement with use with any developer for that public lot on 14?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't think there is. So it's not a double count. If there is some type of agreement, then obviously that would bring to question the fear of a double count, but there's no agreement in place today.
Okay, my second question is on 10th and Main at Taylor, we have green space outside the building, we have green space on Ninth and Main. Where's a green space? Is there any requirement for green space besides a three-foot strip on this parcel?
So the design guidelines have standards when it comes to tree trees and plantings and things like that. But as the lot exists and could be developed today, it could be 100, if they, if this plan is not approved, someone could develop that site and make it be 100% impervious with no green spaces today.
Except, so what you're saying is that the most we get is the three feet between the fence and the parking spaces, the buffer.
Um, the...
Setback from fence for parking.
The redevelopment plan recommends a lot of, you know, tree trees, plantings, things like that to kind of, you know, soften, soften the area and make it more pedestrian friendly. And I think that if any plan were to go forward in the technical review, maybe that would certainly be something they would, you know, highlight.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Haversick, H A B S O Y E R S T I C K, 507 Main. I just wanted to voice, right now, I guess interpreting this as a case of applying academia versus the rules, the guidelines of the town. But I want to just throw out a couple of human factors, if you will, you know, for the center of town. One, as with everybody's every topic, topic in the parking, the 1.5 number for the two-bedroom is not realistic at all. There's a duplex rental across the street from me at 506. More often than not, there's four millennials on each side, they each have a significant other. Bam, I've got 16 cars taking up more than half of the available street parking on my block. So I, I really view this, I don't think people are going to live in those potential units of half, and they're going to be investment properties which are going to end up as rentals for more, possibly more people. Secondly, when you look at it, you know, again, coming from my perspective, on the, up on Ninth Avenue, a block and a half of Main Street, the plaza parking, for the restaurants, the music on the plaza, the bars, the gym during a couple of times a day, that's the tire shop that used to be across the street from the previous. The music school, there's no available spaces. I mean, you talk about weekends, go around there at three, three or five o'clock in the afternoon, you can't park on Main Street. If, if they have their burritos, have their happy hour, you know, the, the plaza's full. The, you know, it's, and it makes it extremely difficult to come down, especially Eighth Avenue and Main Street, and 10th Avenue, I mean, is giving a bad point as well. But at Eighth Avenue, you have the Beach House Brewery with the, I think they have the name Bill Pass Tavern next door. The crowds there are unbelievable. Now Beach House is going to require Jack's Tavern liquor license and at least in the CoStar that they mentioned about the, you know, that they're doing weddings and catering corporate events, and now when they go, they, a full cocktail menu with a full restaurant menu. Where are these guests going to park? Oops, I'm sorry, I blacked out here. So that's another concern. Parking down Ninth right now is, the first couple of blocks, I, I would just, one term of ridiculous. You know, in the off-season, we have St. Rose High School students that park from Main Street basically down to the First Aid Hall. And then naturally with the summer, with all the tourists in town, the parking up on that end of town is, is ridiculous. Main Street, you get backups when the bridge goes up, the traffic lights come into play, people trying to get there. It, it easily goes past Ninth Avenue. The same thing going in the other direction, if the train goes down, or the train, when the gates go down, the traffic is tied up going in and out of 35, and again, ties up the center of town, and now you're talking, putting however many potential units there with more traffic going through there. Ninth Avenue, since that whole redesign, when they did the park, or redid the Eighth Avenue with the stop signs and that little, I guess you want to call it a circle about a few on Fifth, and then, thank God, they got rid of the circles on 10th, but it's still, 10th and Eighth have more stop signs, and there's a lot more traffic coming down Ninth Avenue because there's only two compared to the other blocks. And truck traffic now is, is becoming more frequent down that block as well, down the avenue as well. There's the issue of the emergency vehicles. You have the Union Firehouse, you have the First Aid right there on Ninth Avenue and E Street and D Street. Are they going to be impacted by all the extra volume going through that center of town? So the, their ability to respond quickly to, you know, to any emergency calls. I guess, and one more just thing, is that, is that the pedestrians are going to be greater danger? Anybody that goes down Ninth Avenue frequently during the course of the day, there's a lot of people that just hang those quick U-turns and park at the right-hand diagonal parking. Now, if you have cars coming in and out of the garage on the right-hand side, people, you know, going, hoping to make the lefts into those diagonal parkings, it's two blocks from the elementary schools, two blocks from St. Rose, the kids going through there are going to be at risk. It, it's, it's just bettled, is all I can say. And I just, just wanted to put that human side, if you will, you know, to this consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Major on 605 Ninth Avenue, Belmar. Do you mind if I just sit a moment with these? I found...
No, the mic doesn't work, so as long as you're loud.
Okay, thank you so much. I, I'm a little, I need a little clarification, but I have an awful lot of things I want to say, so. There's this Central Business District 1 plan before you, which is separate from the Seaport redevelopment plan that I...
Direct your question to the planner, she'll be able to address it.
So there is a redevelopment plan for block 95, lots five and seven, that is separate from the Seaport redevelopment plan.
So anything I read in the Seaport redevelopment plan and the master plan may or may not apply to this special plan?
Correct.
Interesting, never heard that before. Okay, but I guess it's a first, and I guess this is our slippery slope we're on our way through. Review of application for redevelopment then, doesn't fit here because we don't have an application for redevelopment per se. We have a redevelopment of a particular two lots, is that correct? Am I correct there?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay, I spent a lot of time reading this. So this is our Seaport redevelopment plan and our master, and it's review of applications, and it talks about how, it sounds very similar to what you're doing, except there's nine application per se here for a building.
So you, so similar...
So we're doing something similar but for a, for a concept.
So the Seaport redevelopment plan is a separate redevelopment area in Belmar. A redevelopment plan for the area, a vision of what you want the area to look like, needs to be adopted before you can review applications for redevelopment in the area.
And yet you've taken every advantage, the maximums of the Seaport redevelopment plan, and want to put it in this plan. And by the way, those are not four feet, yeah, you can, four stories, you can go to four stories, that's a max. But the Seaport redevelopment plan says you can start at two and a half stories. It doesn't have to be a four-story building, only if you guys and Town Council make it so. It doesn't have to have that kind of density. It doesn't have to have a zero impervious surface. The fact that we have 100% impervious surface right now, why, those buildings were built in the 1950s. We didn't know about super storm Sandy, we didn't know about seas rising, we didn't know that in our own master plan, it says that by 2050, this borough can expect over $20 million in damages due to seas rising and more violent storms. But let's keep making those impervious surfaces by golly because we can. Here's something else. While the Seaport redevelopment plan and master plan both list the Central Business District maximum building height as four stories, those same documents use a from-to-range. They give you that leeway. The writers of that document gave opportunity for us to say no to four stories. That gives this board discretion. You have the power. Our hope is that the borough doesn't feel compelled to allow the maximum building heights to increase maximum density, so that we're all talking about, where are we going to park the cars for this four-story building, rather than say, you're right, we're not going to overwhelm our residential area that it butts up right against. We're going to respect the fact that our town doesn't need that kind of density. I'm very confused because now we have a different plan, so now none of this applies. But on page 17 of the Seaport redevelopment plan, there's this little piece that talks about when a, when a, a commercial is abutting a residential, how it should not be a sort of in-your-face with the four stories, but that it should gently slope. And they have specific requirements for the amount of footage that anything facing the residential should be. This hasn't been done in a single, not one single building of redevelopment in our town has had this setback, if this is so. You guys have options. You have a way to control this. And I put the, the onus squarely on you and Town Council. If you pass all of this with a rubber stamp and say, yeah, let's go four stories, let's do maximum impervious surface, because we can, because you have the power. And because you can rest on all the ordinances and state rules and whatever regulations, rather than be, being forward-thinking and say, no, we're not going to take our town in that direction. Thank you.
I'm Jerry Papafosko, V U C C A F, U S C O, 409 Fifth Avenue. To follow up your question, I think what everyone doesn't know in the audience is that the town could have very easily put in here that the maximum building height is three stories. The governing body can put in here whatever it wants. It could have said, um, three stories max. It could have said, lot frontage, no, I'm sorry, um, front yard setback, it says zero feet. Could have said 10 feet, right? It has the power to do that. Essentially, what they're doing is they're rezoning these two blocks. So they can do whatever they want. It could be a three-story. They could say two stories. They could say townhouses, right? But they didn't, they said four stories. There's no reason why it has to be consistent with the CBD 1. Because they're basically starting from scratch. The other thing that bothers me is that it's only for two lots. Why would we spend the time to redevelop a plan, put up a plan for two lots only, when this whole area has been a group from day one, five, seven through 15? Now we get a plan for two lots? What is that about?
Yep.
I'm speaking, Anja, D A G A N Y A, 201 Ninth Avenue. I think everybody's getting the general gist that we all move to a small town, and both the former and the current mayor are trying to make it an urban area. They're trying to build it up, I don't know whether for grants or whatever, but they're not considering these people out here, the residents. I'm going to also say that from the draft, and we've said this before, out of this draft, it says while block 95, lots five and seven are not located in the Seaport redevelopment area, we agree with the lane said, we don't have to do anything with these. We can just clean up that back area and leave the parking lot. We don't need to do anything. We don't need to do anything. The other thing is, other towns, they just had in the, in the Asbury Park press, Madawan, they had a lovely old historic building. And they finally, they've been back and forth with it, they kept the outside facade of the building and put condos inside. So if we wanted to do that with a bank, then just leave the bank there and just do that. Okay, there are, as Lane said, other options. And I think, I think we're all living in fear of that horrible building on 10th Avenue. We're all living in fear. I will talk over that bridge. I don't do it, but I want to close my eyes because it's so, it's so awful. And if part of the redevelopment could be taking a wrecking ball for that and starting over, I would love it. But that's what happens. So what I'm begging from the council, this group, and I'm not blaming everybody that's here because it was the former council and the former mayor, but it's the current mayor too, and the current council that has to answer for this. Listen to these people. These are the people that voted in. These are the people that are living in this town, okay? This is affecting all of us. We're starting to get buildings going up in the middle, sprouting in the middle of residential areas and things like that, that are, are large and over, you know, overcapacity. And I know we had some problems. I know it's, it's been, I think, resolved with sewage in the Sharp River. We're having trouble, electricity, handling, all of this, it's too much. It's a little town. It's a nice little town. Can we keep it that way?
Look, Jim Scharr, S H A R R O C K, 5159 D. You know, I heard a lot today. And, uh, Lane, thank you for that, I'm glad I didn't have to follow up, basically. I don't think that I could have been. Apologies to the urban planner. My daughter's an urban planner. But people are dealing with frustration. I know what your job is, but we were just pretty much enlightened by Lane. Brought up a couple of real good points. And the only thing I want to say is, the woman who just preceded me said the same thing. The sins that are passed by the last council, I'm sorry, mayor of council, everybody said, you kick the can down the road. Don't kick the can back up Knight Avenue. Please, don't do that to us. I moved out of the most popular, densely populated town in the United States, Hudson County. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Hudson County. I moved to the borough of Belmar. I wanted to leave all that, I just became a registered voter in Belmar in July. I left all that behind me to move here. And I'll close with asking one question. And I don't know, Matt, I don't have any idea where anybody lives on this council, on this board. What would you do if you were me and lived a block and a half from this proposal, from the bank building and that site? What would you do? What would your recommendation be for council? My, that's a rhetorical question, and you know it. I have no idea where you live. But the answer is rhetorical, because I know what you would recommend for council.
Hello, my name is Brett Lomas, L O M A S. I live at 609 Knight Ave. It's the block number four, right next door to this building. So, uh, to be clear, the purpose, the purpose of the ordinance, right? Is it to add the two properties to the redevelopment zone? Or is it to redefine the rules for those two properties within the zone?
The latter. I would, I would say, based upon, based upon a loose characterization. They're already part of this redevelopment area. Now this is a plan to develop.
Okay. Are you aware that the council last week, at last week's meeting on this ordinance, they believed and they stated last week that this ordinance only added these two properties to the zone? So when they voted and they did the first reading and passed this ordinance, they said, I said, what is the property of this ordinance, the purpose of the ordinance? And I think two or three council members said that it was adding the two properties to the zone. So I'm wondering, like, did the council know what they were voting on? Or were they misinformed by someone? Or what, what the deal is there?
I can't respond to your questions. I know that as, and it's in the, and actually it's in the resolution that they approved.
I know. I know they approved it. And after they approved it, I got up and I asked what was the purpose? And they said it was adding the two properties to the zone.
And to the best of my knowledge, being a part of how this parcel, if you will, using all the lot and the block, the majority of it, except for the last two lots in the, well, the majority of it has been in a redevelopment area and sort of two lots, lots, I believe it's 14 and 15, were added on the recommendation of this board to sort of square off that parcel because that was the, and again, this is my characterization. I don't speak for the board. It's my understanding. Because that was sort of the natural line that was already developed between residential and commercial along that block.
That makes sense. I'm just wondering whether at the first meeting, when the council sent it here-
I, I, I just, I can't speak for that. I was not a member.
So, uh, for this, for the property, for both, what's the frontage on Main Street?
For the, for the entire two parcels or the entire-
Yeah, what is the total frontage on Main Street about?
You just have the one lot, correct?
Right, which is approximately-
What's the frontage for combining the two, right?
Along 9th?
Along 9th. What's the frontage along 9th?
250 feet.
Okay, so this is primarily on 9th, Knight Ave, not Main Street.
The majority of, the, the frontage is on 9th.
Correct.
There's, there's property along Main Street.
Right. And Knight Ave is obviously a residential street, right? So are there any other developments in Belmar that were on the corner of a residential street just like this one, in the same situation, kind of? Not necessarily in a redevelopment zone, but-
I would say any, any parcel that you have on the east side, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the color.
Well, really, I'm thinking about Fifth and Main and Eighth and Main. Similar situations that were developed in the past, you know, 10 years.
I don't have those in my mind. I'm just looking at this map where I see primarily commercial development, sort of maybe two, three lots in, and then you have the residential lots in those blocks that are just east of the building.
Okay. And, uh, so we were talking before about setbacks. And I was, you know, when I first read this draft, I was, uh, I was happy that the setback was increased to 30 feet, right? But then I wondered, what are the setbacks on those other two that in my mind are very similar developments? Does anybody know what the setback for the, for the Fifth and Main one is? Or the Eighth and Main? Because they're both the same, though.
Sorry, I did not.
They're both 100 feet compared to 30.
Bravo!
So to give, to give you an example of how far 30 feet is, this is my house. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. There, four stories. Four stories. Now those buildings are only three stories. And they have a, maybe three and a half, I don't know, but from the outside it looks like three. Yeah. And this one's four. Now what's the height, the maximum height? Because on here it said 46. That's not what it said on page 11 of the draft. It says 52 feet tall.
So there, uh, the way that the height is, so the height of the building, if there's interior parking, is 46 feet. If you are standing in the center line of the road and looking up at the building, any, you know, ornamentation to make it more aesthetically appealing cannot be higher than 52 feet when you're standing in the middle of the road.
So really it goes up to, you know, the building goes to 46, but really it could go up to 52.
Well, you want to address that?
So the building, no. So when you're, it measured, so the buildings are measured from, you know, the elevation, the base of the building to the top. But if you're standing in the middle of the street, the center line of the road and looking up at the building, it cannot appear to be higher than 52 feet.
Okay. So appear to be 52 or 52?
So, yeah.
Like, I'm a math teacher, so, you know, appear to be 52 or 52.
So 52, but it's from a lower starting point.
I, I don't understand what you said. I'm sorry. Could you explain it, what you said? I'm sorry.
So the height of the building-
Correct.
Straight line, right, from the base of the building to the height of the, the top of the building.
Right.
If there's interior parking, it's permitted to be 46 feet. If there's not interior parking, it's permitted to be 40. But, um, if you're standing, you know, on the center line of the street, the building height, what you see from the center line, because the street is lower than the base of the building, that is 52 feet.
That's what you measure from? Yeah, miss, that's what you've measured? Just in the line of the street?
So there's two measurements there.
Okay.
The 46 feet, the building cannot be any higher than 46 feet. But it also has that 52 feet from the center line. So if there's any, you know-
Finish that sentence. I think that's what the rest of the-
If there's any, it's big, if the center line of the street is, that requirement is there to make sure that the building looks straight all the way around, basically. Looks even.
So, uh-
The second line of Knight Avenue?
I believe it's Main Street.
Main.
So I guess one, one of my points is that if this building is four stories, 30 feet away from a house, and the other two buildings in similar situations had 100-foot setback and are three and a half stories. You know, one of the, I don't, I don't want, maybe main ideas of the master plan is that it says that everything has to be developed while preserving the character of existing neighborhoods. And that's a quote from the master plan. So I would assume that this does not preserve the character of existing neighborhoods, especially if the frontage is primarily on 9th Ave. There's a little piece on, on Main Street, yes. But we're talking maybe 50 feet compared to 250 feet. It's primarily on 9th Ave, and this does not preserve the character of 9th Ave. How many apartments are allowed under the plan? You have to calculate it.
There's a little less than 30, probably.
30, exactly. 30 apartments. And the building, uh, square footage of the building, I believe, would be 46,000 square feet of the building allowed? Now-
Have you calculated how big of a square foot building, if it's built to the 46, I get 52 for 70? Can you give an estimate of how much square foot is that building to be?
I think I did it using the floor-to-air ratio.
I think you're right. I think you're right. I'm just, you asked, I just want to know.
I don't know.
You don't? Okay.
I, you know, sit down and try it, but-
She's the planner, not the interviewer.
One of the things that, um, that I, you know, from the audience, one of the things that I've been frustrated by listening is that we seem, you know, there's the CBD and there's the Seaport redevelopment. And what it seems to be going on is we're picking and choosing the worst, from my perspective, right? The tallest and the biggest from each. And when they're in disagreement, we choose the one that's bigger or less parking, instead of choosing the one that is, you know, more parking. So on the sheet that was handed out, you know, we're comparing CBD 1 to the redevelopment plan. But if you look at, um, if you look at parking figures for the Seaport, for the Seaport plan, under this proposed plan, they would, uh, you know, I did the calculations the same way. I, I assumed, you know, if you're doing 45 for residential and 23 non-residential, total of 68 spots. Under the Seaport, I calculated using the same, same number, same way. So maybe if they're a little bit off, they'd be off in the same direction. 94.5. So the difference is 27 spaces. We're lowering how many spots they need by 27 spaces, right? And we're, everybody seems to admit that there's a parking problem. But the solution is not to lower the parking standards, right? I mean, it doesn't make any sense. In this plan, I believe it states at some point that the borough will use, be progressive in the use of long and short-term property tax incentives in the mutual interest of the redeveloper and the borough. Now, we just had, uh, you know, a tax increase of 21%, right? And I think the borough has been pretty good about, about eating that, that, you know, about eating that tax increase. You know, there's, people complain, but we understand that it's got to come from somewhere, right? But the idea that if the borough needs to raise taxes by that much, that we're giving tax breaks to developers for a building that, you know, the residents don't want, seems crazy. Was the developer or the owner of the land, and this gets back to signaling these two properties out, right? So was the developer or the owner, were they involved in revising the plan?
I don't know if the planning board has any knowledge about that.
What about the planner?
So, uh, there, the owner of the property presented, you know, what he wanted there, but we had multiple conversations and what we wanted, you know, what the borough envisioned for the area.
So the developer has a plan for this site.
I think she said the owner.
The owner, I'm sorry. I was, I was mixing them up. So the owner has a plan for the, has a plan for the site, right? And so why is the plan not public? You know, we're changing the rules for these two properties only, so that they can build whatever they want. Taking an end run around zoning.
I, I think, I think this is the plan, and that's why it's public. I mean, I, I can't speak for mayor and council. Mayor and council has basically commissioned this, this plan for this development. I, I, I can't sit here and tell you I have any knowledge about how it was developed, who developed it. I know you're going to have to consider CAFRA. I know you're going to have to set a residential site improvement standards. And I will suggest to you, where I have had a hand in it, many owners have no idea that those rules and requirements are in place. But what you have is a very public presentation of the plans being offered after a first reading by mayor and council, for us to have this, to give everybody an opportunity to see what is being proposed. I don't know if mayor and council are going to approve it. But I know that this is what they've asked the planning board to look at and sort of as, I don't know if you're hearing at the beginning of my comments, acting sort of as the legislative committee for the governing body, we're exploring it.
Yes. So, uh, I think I heard, I, I'm not sure if it was you. I heard somebody say that, you know, if this is approved, that they wouldn't need to come back for any variances.
Well, they should not. Generally, when you've designated an area as an area in need of redevelopment and you have an approved plan, and there's always one or two hinks in this, but the general rule is, no, you would not be coming and then giving the variance relief because your development should meet the plan.
So the owner was involved in the process of revising this plan, right? And they revised it so that they could build whatever, what they wanted to build?
I would, I would suggest, I would suggest that. I would, I would suggest, I would suggest, and I don't wanna speak for the planner, but I would suggest that her, what her, what her presentation was, was that the owner approached and said what they would like to see, and there was back and forth.
Okay.
The owner still has to make a site plan application to the board, showing them what they wanna build.
I would suggest that this sets a dangerous precedent. If, if you're going to have owners of lots rewriting redevelopment plans for just their lots, it's just, why even have a zoning board? Why even have, have to get variances? Why, what's next? Is Belmar Inn gonna be a redevelopment plan next? Or, or another one of these properties that have been fought? All of these other developments that have been fought in the last, you know, year or two years, right? They got fought in zoning, 'cause it's a harder fight in zoning than it is at planning. And the idea that an owner can come into planning and change the rules to suit whatever they want, to not have to have that fight in zoning, sets a dangerous precedent. And when you're only doing a plan for these two properties with one single owner, that's what's going on. So, um, really, I'm close to the end, I promise. You know, really, the, for me, the speed that this was brought up, I know originally it was two thousand seventeen. But one of the things that I complained about at the council meeting was the agenda was posted the day before the meeting, uh, I, I believe. Uh, and this is a major thing. Um, and I know that when you're trying to get variances, you have to notify everybody within two-hundred feet. But when you're changing the redevelopment plan, you don't have to do that. It's another one of those things where, because it's only these two properties, it, it, it just seems, I don't know a better word, it seems shady, you know? And it seems like there's, I don't know if there's, uh, you know, it gives the impression of either backroom deals or, or whatever. Um, and I'm not saying, I don't think that's what's going on, but it, it just, it gives that impression. And I don't like the idea of rezoning just these two properties, uh, to meet the requirements of an owner. And you know, and then, so, so it's, it's announced on the agenda, that gets approved before any comment. Comments were made after, uh, after it was approved. Uh, the planning board meeting where all this is presented is, is a week later. Uh, it, you know, that, the speed that this is going, um, seems, uh, suspect. So, uh, in conclusion, I'm not against, I'm not against the development of this lot, right? I'm not. Um, but our community isn't Hoboken, it's not Jersey City, right? Uh, you know, go back to the master plan, that this needs to preserve the character of existing neighborhoods, and this does not. This does not. Four stories on the east side of Main, next to a residential zone is too high. Thirty feet of setback to a house, if you're gonna build four stories, is too little. Not making improvements to the rainwater management with the, with, um, the impervious space. You know, just going back what was done fifty years ago, doesn't make any sense. We're supposed to be redeveloping, making better, right? Not keeping the same. And there is water problems, right? I live next door to, to, to that lot, and when it rains, the water pours off into, into our yard. And our sump pump runs, runs like crazy. Lowering the number of parking spaces needed when we have a problem is not the solution. While we're changing the rules, let's change the rules to what the town needs and what the town wants. Not what the owners want for this particular lot, right? We have parking. We don't need, as a town, to constantly be in this battle, right? If things were, if things were, uh, in good taste. I don't know another way to say it. But if, I wouldn't be fighting this if it wasn't for stories. Right? If it wasn't right up against proper law. Um, and I know that they made an improvement there, but I think it still needs to be improved with this setback. Um, and I think that four stories is too tall. Um, you know, I think the town needs to decide together what's in the best interest out in the open, and not in closed doors, and try to speed, you know, hoping, you know, getting this through before anybody notices. Which is kinda what it seems like it's doing with the speed. So, uh, I thank you, uh, and, uh, on the way out, uh, you know, this was real quick, so we didn't have that long, but, uh, there's about a hundred signatures here for a petition that says, "The proposed plan does not comply with the general intent or scheme of the master plan. We, the undersigned, oppose development of a four-story building on Ninth Avenue, and support the borough in development while preserving the character of existing neighborhoods as, as the master plan states." I mean, planning board, I have it.
They can market a dividend, they can take it.
I'm just, I, I asked him whether he wanted to present it to council or the planning board.
I'd like to present it to both.
You got a copy?
April, you can copy that, right?
Can we make a copy?
I mean, if you want, I would just, you went to that much work.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, good for you. Let me do this, we'll mark that, well, I'll tell you what, when you're ready to have it marked as an exhibit, I will mark that as an exhibit. But again, so that you understand, to the extent that we don't prove an ordinance one way or the other.
Yeah, but you know what? If these guys vote no, then it's harder for the council to vote yes.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Haverstick, H-A-B-E-S-T-I-C-K, five oh seven nine. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I do wanna make a point that Belmar Recreation uses Piano Plaza as a cultural and musical center for the town. And in the summer, you have musical groups appearing, and the fall, you have the Halloween parade, you have the Christmas festivities and caroling that go on there. And now you're bordering, you have a nice pizza place, you have a realtor, you have a drugstore, and now you have a skyscraper. Is that what we want to show as a town? As a little town that hasn't been the past? And I would like to have the aesthetics of our town middle center recognized and what's going to be planned for that area. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Lynch, and I lived forty-one in Ninth Avenue for almost my entire life, which is many years.
And Lynch is N-L-Y-N-C-H?
No, I'm N-C-H.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, everybody who has spoken tonight has been magnificent. And as a resident of this town for so many years, I was on the Board of Adjustments at one time. And it came because if there was no parking in that area, they just didn't get, or they had to make changes, took a form with us, not with what their Christmas wish was. So, anyhow, that's one thing. And I'm not gonna go into the parking, 'cause that's already been addressed. But the fact that I feel is that the residents of this town have been good with it, because we were led to believe with these condos coming in, quote the condos, it was, it's not condos, it's garden apartments. So the taxes, instead of being eight hundred thousand, they get taxed on that, a hundred thousand, whatever. Just with it being garden apartments, the tax revenue that they're making is minimal, very minimal. So it, it didn't bring our taxes down like it was supposed to. If anything, it exploded. I mean, I have, I know, going from the previous administration, that, uh, it was, the candy store was given away in this town.
That's right.
And and it, it just, they expected us to just sit by and the good, the good residents in this town have a hard time parking, some is outrageous. On my Ninth Avenue, sometimes I can't even get out of my driveway, because they're, they're and then if you ask them to move, they, they almost tell you, you know, I'll take your ticket. But yet you still can't get out of your driveway. So anyhow, but you have to be strong. Because, you know, they'll take anything they want, there's a lot of greed in this world. And that's what I feel is, is greed. Thank you.
Tom Durdano, six oh five Ninth Avenue, G-I-O-R-D-I-N. I wanna compliment my wife, she spent the whole week working on all that stuff. I wanna say just, I wanna say one thing and then ask you a question. When I go through Avon, Spring Lake, Seaguard, whether I'm on my bike or driving or whatever, you don't see any of this stuff. Coming through Belmar, and what do you see? Like Rose said, tenth Avenue, how in the hell did that ever get there? That's not Belmar. Now, the question I have, we trust all of you folks. All these people here, I spoke to many of them all week. None of them, none of them want anything to do with a four-story, and God bless Brett, who just moved there. How dare, you folks aren't gonna live there? Tell me you'll be living there. We're leaving there. We bought our house thirty-seven years ago. I've sunk thousands, hundreds of thousands into it. Now what happens to the value of my house? If at my age seventy-six, I wanna retire, put a for sale sign up? By the hell is that there? Would that happen to your house? Your value? You guys are gonna make the decision, and it will not affect you. Because you don't live where we live. As Jimmy said, it's gonna affect us. And my plea to you, loving this town as my wife and I have for the last thirty-seven years, is that you don't allow the greed to take over, to put as many units in, to make as much money as they can, and screw everybody else who've invested our lives and our money in this beautiful town we call Belmar. That's on you. I can't say no to these developers. You guys can. And if you have any gumption, any morality, think about it if you lived where Brett lives or two doors down east that I live. Now Mike certainly knows what my wife and I put up with for twenty-five years with the guy next to us. We suffered. You think we wanna go through this again? Now, please, I'm gonna stop right now. I'm looking at these wonderful people here. These people don't want this. Are you gonna say, "We don't care, we're gonna get the developer what he wants"? That's on you. But I can tell you something, I've spoken to many of them, and I know some of you on the dais. Really, you gotta help us here.
And it's not working, so you don't have to get too close, by the way, so don't feel like you're gonna get too close.
We always hear you, Jim.
Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, I think it's Christine, planner, thank you for coming tonight. I have a couple of comments, uh, about the plan itself. Page thirteen, if you would take a look at it. Page thirteen of the plan. Everybody should have a copy. Okay. Under the subject heading Affordable Housing. That should be deleted and point to ordinance two zero one nine dash twenty-five. That is Belmar's COLA law, period. Doesn't have to be included in any plan here tonight, or any redevelopment or plan. This applies to every property in Belmar. And I guess April can give us an update, I believe it's been submitted to the Department of Community Affairs for approval. Does anybody have any problem with that?
Um, until it's formally approved, I, I hear what you're saying, I understand.
It's not codified yet, but it's approved by mayor and council.
I would suggest to you that maybe put a note in there that you're pending codification, this, this section may not apply. But I, I'd like to have something in there to protect the plan in case it doesn't get approved. I, I agree with everything you've said. But you understand what I'm saying, until it's approved, I don't want someone to say, "Oh, there's no CO requirement, 'cause you didn't put it in your plan," if for some reason that plan didn't get approved. We still have a CO requirement.
Yes, absolutely.
Which essentially, if it's passed, it would supersede this section.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, actually, the one that's, the one that's in the plans has not been approved by the Department.
Correct.
Okay? So, take one or the other, but.
Yeah, let me noodle through, let me noodle through that for a second.
I believe that, uh, this section is consistent with the borough's.
Uh, but she makes a good point, I think.
I don't, I disagree with you, Christine. Currently, in Belmar, residential properties, even if we build with no increased density, we have to pay a one-point-five percent COLA obligation. What's proposed here is densities that are magnitudes higher than any individual residential property in Belmar. That percentage for residential development should be the maximum allowed, allowed by law, okay? Let me just tell you something about, and these other people have mentioned it here before, Tenth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. All those apartments, all those housing units are advertised as luxury. There's nothing there that says affordable housing. When we checked the Tenth Avenue apartment site, they start at twenty-two hundred dollars a month and go up from there, period. These developers should be paying the maximum COLA obligation allowed by law. Otherwise, we're just gonna be swamped with residential development. Quite truthfully, I think what you're seeing is that there's a glut of ground-level storefront space. The entire area, okay? All the money is in residential development. And the only way they're gonna get any control of that is to make them carry their own board as far as the COLA housing obligation. That's why this proposed plan here should, and by the way, it is labeled draft, at least the copy that I had gotten, should, should point directly to the borough's COLA ordinance. Because those rates may actually change over the period of years, okay? Not be fixed at one and a half percent. Comment on page number seven, redevelopment objective. And there's a number of reasons this could be in the plan. I would like to see it stabilized residential property values as an objective of doing any of this redevelopment stuff, okay? Now, I, I know some of you have been around here since, uh, Now, I know some of you have been around here since the original redevelopment promises were made with C. Coach Chevrolet, okay? It was sold to the residents of Belmar based upon, this was going to be used to either stabilize or lower our residential property taxes. I don't think we've seen that. And that should be a major objective of anything that we do here now. Otherwise, what good does redevelopment do the residents of Belmar? Number ten, permitted uses. And the whole listing of them, they all sound nice and cute, but they all require parking. Why not have some permitted uses like hotels, high-tech, five G facilities, things that we may actually need but don't require parking? And one last comment I wanted to make regarding where we are. On eleven oh six, twenty nineteen, ordinance two zero one nine dash thirty-five, first reading, that started the forty-five days planning board shot clock to make redevelopment plan recommendations through Mayor and Council. Clock stops on for about twelve twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Okay? Although the Mayor and Council may have something on their agenda for a second reading of that ordinance, they cannot take any official action on a redevelopment plan until that forty-five days has expired or the planning board has to respond if that's the Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
I have one more thing.
Can we let anybody who has to make a comment, who wants to? And I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine.
You're better than I am.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Not a good move.
Hi, I'm Jane Daly, D A L E Y, six oh four, ninth avenue. I just want to bring up because nobody else has. This particular HNA calls for retail, and I just don't get that. We've got tons of retail space in Belmar that's been sitting out there, some of it for years. We've had a couple of businesses come in and leave in a month. And now we want to build more retail? I mean, I think we should be concentrating on helping these little businesses that are struggling. I work for one and it might not be here in a year. And there's nothing to bring people into town. Like, you know, it's not like, I got to go to Verizon and, well, we're there, why don't we go out to dinner? Or, you know, the kids want to go to whatever shop. We're not, we're so many little towns all bunched up. And there isn't anything special to bring people to Belmar and have them stay.
No place to park.
And, well, that's, that is a problem. I mean, my husband and I talk about going up to Red Bank and, ah, don't really want to deal with the traffic. We don't want to turn into another Red Bank. Where we have, our next-door neighbors wanted to be here tonight, but they had tickets to Count Basie. And they said, you know, we can't even go over the beginning of the meeting because we'll never find a place to park in Red Bank. And we're headed down, I mean, I think we're already down that road as far as parking goes. But I think too, this development is going to be a detrimental to the little businesses on Main. Because like the Chinese restaurant, I live patty corner from there, anyone who picks up, drives around the back and parks back there and gets their food and drives out. There's nowhere to park on Main Street. They're not going to have any, they're going to go out of business because people can't get to pick up their food. So, I mean, I think that we need to concentrate on the retail we have and not bringing more retail in.
Step four.
Hi, Paul Marino, M A R I N O, one twelve, ninth avenue, Belmar. I have a question for the developer. Would he want his property if he couldn't build a four-story building?
At this point in the existing zoning, he can build a four-story building. But you may be right.
But I'm just taking a point because to me, this is where it's seen, it doesn't seem like a sham. To me, I think it is because if you approach a property owner and say, listen, if you can get this approved for a four-story building, I want it. But if you can't, I don't want it. So I have a very suspicious mind. Yeah, it was approved for that, but how do we know that he didn't approach and he had it approved first? Because that's what they said, right?
Well, this was two thousand and seventeen it was approved.
Right, and but the, but the owner himself had a hand in on getting it approved for that so he could sell it for even more money?
I don't know if anybody here can speak to that.
He's not here, I would love to ask him. Because why would an owner want anything to do with what a developer's going to do unless he had, thought he could sell it for even more money? Because a one-family house can, can get a million, two-family get two million, but a four-story, he'll sell it for twenty million and then leave Belmar and leave us...
Well, the owner and the developer could be one of the same.
And it is? Do we know that?
I don't know that, no. So I don't know if there's two different parties or what you're, you know, what's behind it.
That seems possible, really. Well, I tell you one thing that could happen if this crowded area continues, we're going to need permit parking between Bay and Ocean, that's for sure. We're going to turn into Point Pleasant. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm sorry, yes, you wanted to make another comment.
No, I do. I know, I, I wanted to add one thing to the gentleman who had talked about the affordable. Is it not true that affordable housing regulations for parking, you don't have to provide a parking space if you do have an affordable housing unit or however many units there are?
The way the planings are in, an affordable housing unit does not have...
Does not have to. Okay. So somehow do they fly in planes? I'm trying to understand, they don't have cars? We don't expect a person who's living in affordable housing to have a car? Or what, why not? Why, why do they not get a parking space?
I don't think it's not that they wouldn't get a parking space, I think it's that there's no additional parking requirement. Because typically, when developers are providing affordable housing, they're not making, they're losing money by providing the affordable housing.
What was I thinking? Money's doing?
But the, but every, every town has an affordable housing obligation. So to make the development, you know, make sense, if they're providing housing, if they're providing affordable housing, you know, it may not need to provide parking spaces, that's what Belmar has chosen to do.
That's not necessarily applicable only to Belmar, that's the rules on affordable housing in order to get it built.
And I, I can't, I can't make absolute lines toward who was here in seventeen and who wasn't. But my recollection is that the property was bought and sold by seventeen when the changes, in other words, it's the same owner who owns it today, whether he's going to be the developer or not. I'm pretty certain. Because that's just my, and that is recollection, but I, I think it was. When you're saying, but the owner may not have been around for seventeen, I think the owner was because there was an article in the CoStar back then that did the first drawings where there was going to be underparking and the, the actual building came back to quite close to Brett and Michelle's house. And that was alarming when I saw it. And that was seventeen, I want to say, and that would have been...
You're talking about the bank property?
Yes, but I'm talking the bank property, by golly. And I don't, I don't, I shouldn't speak at this meeting and that, but I think that it is the same person. I think that person's owned that property for a couple of years, for certainly within seventeen.
I'll leave it to your testimony.
Well, because, here's the thing I'm thinking. This is, this is against a democratic order. The people should be deciding a redevelopment plan. When the original redevelopment plan was decided, numerous public meetings took place, numerous discussions in the public arena took place. In this, absolutely, the original redevelopment.
I've been a part of every one of them. Usually one of them.
Oh, I disagree with you, sir. I was present during the original redevelopment conversations in the nineties.
Redevelopment conversation or plan? I'm making a distinction because...
Quite before the plan was written. And so what I'm saying to you is, this is different. This is a developer having his own personal plan written up. And that, to me, seems undemocratic. I want to just go on the record saying that.
And you did. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. I'll roll back through questions perhaps, Doug, or do you want to roll through terms of comments?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if the board, we're closing the public portion, I don't know if as a result of what the board has heard, they have more questions for the plan or not. That may be a better way.
Yeah, I was thinking questions just as a result.
Right.
So I'll roll down the board once again. Mr. Plante, any questions for the planner as a result? And if there's none, that's fine.
No, I have one.
I'll go back to you. Okay, I'll go back. To Per. Thank you. Mr. Lindsay. Campbell. Yes. Mr. Zabala.
I just have one question.
Yes.
The height of the building, fifty-two feet. I just have a question about that. Standing in the middle of Main Street, looking up.
Right.
Now, is it measured from the center of Main Street?
It's measured from the center.
So you put a tape measure in the center of the street?
To the top.
Run it up to the peak, the parapet wall or wherever it might be?
Correct.
Or the building?
Correct.
That's the fifty-two.
It would be that pitch, from center of street to top of the building.
Correct.
So it's an angled dimension from the center of the street to the top of the building?
No, it's looking at, if you're standing...
That's what I'm saying, but it's that angled dimension?
Correct.
That's fifty-two feet, not straight up fifty-two.
I just wanted to... Thank you.
Because even at, just to make the point, even at fifty-two, the building's actually greater than forty-seven.
Correct. The building, it's the building height.
It's that, with that right triangle dimension.
The hypotenuse.
We got a math teacher back.
The hypotenuse.
We got a math teacher.
The maximum buildings stories, the CBD one...
That's still left in the meeting, I know that there's comments.
And the redevelopment plan, the maximum buildings stories are four. Does that include the garage? A garage?
In the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Yes.
So if there was no garage, the lower floor, it would be three stories?
I, it could still be four stories, but it could only be forty feet.
Would you get that extra six?
The extra six is if there's a garage space.
Yes, I recall.
Are we going to go back then?
Yes. In terms of citations that currently, currently under whatever these are in the states, what is the height requirement for block lot seven oh five?
The maximum height permitted currently on five and seven is forty-five feet and four stories.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so Doug, what we're charged with is really evaluating, I'll call it, whether the area meets the redevelopment criteria, correct?
No. You already made that determination.
Okay.
You've made the determination that this is an area in need of redevelopment way back, way back when. This now, the determination for the board at this point is, Mayor and Council have accepted that determination.
Right.
We made those determinations, I think, in seventeen, that this, this was an area that was designated in need of redevelopment. At that point in time, if someone came in and wanted to develop, they'd have developed at the CBD one criteria.
All of that criteria.
Right. Now, what has happened is, as, as Mayor and Council have the opportunity to do, now that we've designated this as an area in need of redevelopment, which does a variety of things. It puts in planning tools, it puts a variety of things in place, it puts in public and private partnerships that can exist, puts in a variety of things that are available as tools to develop that parcel. Now, we are charged with, okay, it is an area in need of redevelopment, what's the plan? And what's the plan right now is what we've been discussing in terms of what the, our planner has described. This is the plan that Mayor and Council has asked you to take a look at for development of these parts, these two properties in this area that are in need of redevelopment.
So our charge then...
And our charge then is...
Does it fit in the master plan?
Is this, are there any things that are inconsistent with the master plan? Are they consistent with the master plan? Where they are inconsistent, we identify those inconsistencies with the master plan of this plan and let Mayor and Council, in a sense, we don't, we don't approve or disapprove of this plan. We identify as the, as a sense, the expert in planning for Mayor and Council where this plan either complies or where it does not comply with the master plan. If there are sections where it doesn't comply, we can also recommend areas where, okay, this is, this is how this might comply, but it doesn't change whether Mayor and Council can still approve this plan.
So we can note those areas, as well as note areas of concern, and obviously, we're going to talk about those that were raised during tonight's meeting, concerns.
Correct. And, and, and the presentation, just in a nutshell, the presentation that you, that you heard, the proposed, let's start with the proposed use. The proposed use in this, for this area is a mixed commercial residential use. And again, I'm not going to, I'm going to characterize the planner's testimony. The planner's testimony this evening is, it has always been a part and parcel of our master plan in one shape or another, to have mixed residential, mixed-use residential commercial. That's true when it was the CBD, that's true in the master plans, that's true in the master plan reexaminations. So in terms of the use, I, I would suggest that, well, you can come to your conclusion for those things. In terms of bulk criteria, again, bulk criteria is not in the master plan. Bulk criteria are in your ordinances. Because you'll have bulk criteria, there's different criteria for residential, there's different criteria for commercial. You have a CBD one, you have a CBD two, different criteria. Some you provide parking, some you don't provide parking. Now, the bulk criteria, that's generally where you can highlight those issues, but because you can, you can go through the master plan, the master plan doesn't designate how many parking spaces or how many parking stalls there are. But, and I will again, my characterization, and this wasn't necessarily presented, but I, I think, as I'm looking through, there, there are enough board members who've gone through reexamination reports that know that the original master plan and every reexamination plan thereafter has highlighted a parking issue for the borough of Belmar. You know, and that's, and, and to the extent that you've heard things from public comments that, again, my characterization, this doesn't necessarily solve that problem. You know, that's, that's again, something that has been highlighted in your master plan that we can certainly highlight for, for Mayor and Council. Again, your master plan does not necessarily designate a density. Again, something higher this evening. But again, you know, we have densities that are in your development ordinances. To the extent that, you know, density is impacted, it impacts parking, impacts, impacts floor area ratio, we can certainly still highlight for Mayor and Council the things that we have heard concerning where there may be some issues with regard to the ordinances that present the existence. But in, but in terms of master plan, use is something that's consistent with the master plan that's already, that's been there. You know, it's, I, I don't dispute many of the comments where they, you know, the general comments of, you know, preserving residential characters of neighborhood, that's, that's true. But in terms of the development that you have... But in terms of the development that you have, and a lot that, if there's any issues, I can let the planner speak to this, with regard to sort of the east side of Main Street, if you will. You've got sort of the top of the residential blocks, and usually one to two lots in. And maybe a little bit longer on this lot, because, you know, when I hear 250 feet, usually one to two lots in, but now I'm already talking about 100 feet, thinking of that if it both funded on there. So this is a little bit farther in depth in terms of the impact into the residential area, but also, it was always designated as a commercial area. There hasn't been, nothing in this zoning, and I'll let the planner determine, so I don't think the question's asked, but it's important for the record, nothing in this plan changed a residential property to a commercial property. Is that very characterized?
That's correct.
So you're going from commercial to commercial, mixed residential to mixed residential, but you're having a different bulk criteria.
Yeah, my sense is that's where most of the concern lies, is in bulk standards from everything we've been hearing. Although, obviously, some of the others in terms of maintaining character comes into play when you look at the bulk standard.
When you start talking about, you know, somebody's going to be backing in, and on the one lot that is closest to the residential, you know, you are, you know, somebody, if they develop the back of the building, even if they put onsite parking interior of the building, we've seen those developments, you still have to address, you know, that parking that's even under the building, it's got to come out somewhere, it's going to come out within that area, it's going to come out for, closest to the residential. And in the past, when we've done plans like that, it suggested greater buffer areas, and I'm not talking about a setback, I'm talking about a buffer area. Here you have a fence, you have a 30-foot area, and again, the comments are there. We're not making more land, we're not cutting into Main Street. You've got a certain width there along the long diamond, and that's an area that cars are going to come out there. We may want to express a design, a design concern there, similar to what this planning board did when we were closer to the development, to the bridge, when the bridge was going, and we have, we have the one parcel down at the end of, at the north end of Main, which was developed where we kind of cut in a little bit more so that people could still maneuver, even when that bridge was going up to get in and out of the site or to park there, so it wasn't, we weren't backing onto Main Street.
Right.
We cut it in a little bit further there and redesigned that so that you had an ability on an angle basis, you know, to come out and didn't have to then come right into the lane of traffic, you already had a bunch of traffic backing up on the bridge.
And I think you want to strike the balance of the two, right? You want to be off of Main, but at the same time, you want to buffer against and away from the residential.
Yeah, and as well, and as you already identified, to my way of thinking, and I don't want to speak for the board, but to my way of thinking, okay. Now, if I really do think it's a good idea to have interior parking in that building, and I still want to get a little more parking on the site, now I need a travel lane, I need a travel aisle.
Yeah.
And whether that's, whether that's two stories, or three stories, or four stories, you still have to, if you're still going to put the parking on the interior, it's still going to be a commercial property, you still have to maneuver there if you still want parking sort of on the, on the east side of the travel aisle.
Right.
Parking, aisle, entry and exit into the interior of the building. There's still some planning concerns there with a property that, you know, 250, 250 feet of which 30 feet you're cutting back, and, and, you know, you see what 30 feet is, you know, and now you want to still get some travel aisles in there.
Yeah.
I don't know, what, kind of do I vote on this?
No, what we need to do is, obviously, the question on the table for us is, does it fit into the master plan? And a lot of the concern, and I don't want to speak for the whole board, but at least, I've been keeping a running tally from the, from the residents as they come up, and it's really been focused on the bulk standards.
Correct. I would like to recommend that wherever we come up with, there's two comments that were made that I thought, notable, we ought to try to paraphrase, and wherever we submit, if I may, over those.
Please.
The first one was, the increased density needs to be managed. I liked that phrase, and I think it captured a lot of what was being said, and I would like to see that in what we present. Second phrase I heard that I really liked was, the solution is not too lower at the parking standards. Obviously, the two main concerns are, the concerns are the bulk standards, if you have no public use, the use is consistent with the master plan, I think we all agree with that. It's with the bulk standards, the side rights setback and the parking, and I think those two, two comments that were made sort of capture the flavor of what was communicated in the audience for this board.
And on that point, if I may, the way I've handled that, because sometimes that can get your own board members into a debate, as to what, the way I've recommended to my boards in the past to handle that is, you know, this is what we're charged with doing. Let's give you a flavor of the kinds of comments we heard from members of the public. I'm not asking you to make a finding that that language, or this language, or other language, you know, is what the board has found, but to characterize and accurately represent what we heard is, is a good way to go about that in the night. I don't have comments, it's just a word, takes much better notice, but, and I did from everybody. I didn't take a tally, but I took comments down. Parking was a consistent, a consistent issue. We heard some, some other individuals basically saying, you know, on the plan, and I'm not asking the board to rewrite the plan, but on the plan, saying, look, you're not bound by three stories or four stories.
That's maximum.
You know, as a maximum, you're not bound by that, you could, you could do something different, but-
To reduce the massing, to do something-
Yeah, to reduce the density, to reduce, you know, the impact on the residential neighborhood. You know, trying, you know, the concern is that this, we were trying to take it from sort of a, a small town to creating an urban area. Just one comment, and don't repeat the sins of the past. You know, there were very detailed presentations concerning, you know, the process of redevelopment, and you can share that with the government body, you know. We've seen a variety of things, even from developers, where there's four and five plans that come back in front of this board, you know, and clearly, they have, they have a quote-unquote hand in development of their parcel, but they redevelop it. And I'm thinking of when we were, the number of plans that the board looked at, when we're talking about, where's the old, on the, on the lake, in regard to the old banquet facility, you know, we're looking into that, and we had, I think we were like 7.0, with different plans that we were asked to take a look at, one closing off the street, those types of things. Sometimes that's the way it happens, it doesn't always happen that way, but on particularly difficult parcels, it does happen where we do hear from individuals.
Let me give you some of the, some of the tally that I captured, because I think you captured some of it. I mean, one of the last homeowners I heard from in the back was overbuilt retail. Consider non-parking uses in terms of the bulk use. Concern with tax revenues, where apartment use is much less than a condo for sale, we're seeing more apartment for rent rather than for sale. Concern with this process moving too quickly, perhaps that's something to be said for that. I heard a couple times on Storm Jerry and each from the board, as well as others, concern with ensuring that we maintain that. A few comments on height setback, which obviously we spoke of. I've heard three people use the word selective zoning as an example, which is certainly one that we should note. Parking, now, I think there's a few things that we can, kind of, these are flavors, I'll keep going, but parking is one that I think, in my, in my mind at least, from a bulk standard perspective, that's a problem. That's, and I want to hear from the board on that, if they feel the same way. Plantings, green space, looking for that, where can we accommodate beyond the three-foot buffer? Traffic, emergency vehicle access, concern with pedestrians in the area. So I think those are kind of the flavors of what I was taking away as I heard each of the homeowners.
Can you turn, maybe one comment?
Yeah, please.
If you would, can you also comment for the gentleman that lives next door? His concern about the 30-foot setback also, just talking about, and what you were saying, the parking and coming in and out, I think that deserves for them to take a look at that also in that area. If you don't have that down as a concern, you know, again, the gentleman is saying 30-foot is more than in the CBD, but if you're having parking and egress is going to be coming from the lot, it is something to look at. So again, I think that bears some kind of a comment for the gentleman that lives right next door.
As well as, as we spoke of earlier, where that egress falls in terms of that 250-foot lot line, because that's both traffic as well as the homeowners on the backside. But I know from what I heard, the two hot topics were density and parking, right? Massed density parking, no surprise. So from my perspective at least, and I'd like to hear from my fellow board members, those are the two bulk standards that is not just a moving comment, those are concerns from, from my perspective, at least as the chair of the board, that, that we feel like, or at least I feel like, and I'd like to hear from others, whether they concur, that those are areas that the redevelopment plan is falling short, that should be addressed. And I'll look for others, if you disagree, please say so. But I think we got a good flavor from the neighbors, and so I think what we've seen on 5th or 10th, by the way, 10th does have affordable homes, affordable apartments in it, I don't have any, but there is some affordable component at least. But to your point, we've capped a lot of the residential blocks, a varied degree of, of commercial development, and that's been part of this plan.
Because Main Street is at the top.
Yeah. And the intent is to try to reduce the massing as you turn the corners. In other words, let the Main Street represent what it represents, whether we agree or disagree that it shouldn't be what it is. You know, I know I hear people reference Albon and Spring Lake and Seagirt. We're not Seagirt, we're not Spring Lake, we're never going to be. I mean, we're Belmar, we're different, we are different. Quite frankly, I've been here for many, many years, that's what I love about Belmar. But at the same time, we can control what we're doing. And I heard the comment that a lot of what we look at is the maximum. What we should be striving for is something short of that, and we've got to find a way to kind of get there. So I'm not sure how we achieve that, but it's certainly the maximum, I think there are ways we can, you know, find some middle ground here in terms of massing in size. That's my opinion, too.
I agree, totally agree. I'm listening to everybody, and I have feelings very much about, about Belmar, too. I've been here for over 40 years, and I've seen tremendous changes. I think we have to be care, very careful of the density and the height. I really have to go.
Any other comments? Yes, please.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm glad everybody came out for this. Second thing I'd like to say is that for every one person that sees it, it's probably a ten hours, they feel a little bit, so I'm listening to you, but I just want to say a few things. The redevelopment of Belmar was deemed to be necessary, and it is. You don't, you don't want Belmar to look like Asbury Park on Main Street. So the need for development is there, council has obtained that two years ago. The redevelopment aspect, that allows builders, builders to redevelop with certain tax burdens which is alleviated for them, or reduced for them, and unfortunately, it comes back to us. But the redevelopment plan, the Seaport plan, the master plan are approved by the council, okay, after public hearings and reviewed every 10 years. The development plans, the master plan can be reviewed sooner. I would hope that everybody here comes to the council meeting and expresses their view there, because they are the ultimate deciders of what's going to happen to Belmar, whether it be a master plan, a redevelopment plan, a Seaport redevelopment plan, it all falls on there, they're the elected representatives, and they hear from you, and you're, they're your representative to do what you wish. What's troubling here, and I agree with Jay said, the chairman said, see, what's troubling here is that if the redevelopment plan is not put in place, it falls back to the CBD 1, which is part of the master plan, and they're very similar. In fact, the redevelopment plan has a few aspects that are more stringent. So what I'm saying is, if we say no to this redevelopment plan, it's going to fall back to the CBD 1 plan, which is, which is very limited. You still have four stories, maximum building height, height 45. So what I'm trying to say is, you have to go back to the council and express this so that they can change the master plan, the redevelopment plan, the Seaport redevelopment plan. At this point, I wouldn't be in favor of this, at this point, only to give you people a chance to go back and express your views, give it a little time.
It's still happening if you say no, it just makes it harder for them. Any other comments?
So basically, the charge, and this is where we take, is, I would propose a resolution that, and I always, I state things in the positive, please don't make the fact that I stated in the positive as a way that you should vote, but that the development plan is consistent with the master plan. And have a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Got to get my list, because I'm doing the roll this evening. Mr. Lente?
No.
So that, so that there's no surprises, I'm then going to ask each board member that, you know, that identifies as no, because our second charge is where it is inconsistent with the master plan.
Because I'm just trying to figure out how I can say that together.
Well, we'll come back, we'll come back to the, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Finesse? Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Ms. Fine?
No.
Yeah. It is.
I was going to give Mr. Rositala a look before you go.
That's okay.
Did you say?
No, I didn't say anything yet.
Mr. Forte's, Mr. Rositala?
No.
I'd like, I'd like board members to express today where it is inconsistent with the master plan, not the bulk standards. If we're going to talk about bulk standards, we'll be here all night. I'd like to know where it is inconsistent with the master plan as a, as a use, in this instance. Is it an inconsistent use? Again, our, our second charge for Mayor and Council is to then identify where it is inconsistent with the master plan. As to, we still have the opportunity, even if, so I want to, I want to vote in a second, if you voted that it were, that it was, if you voted that it was, consistent with the master plan, that does not exclude us from identifying issues that we have built in the plan concerning the bulk standards.
Does it preserve the category of the issue, okay?
I'll start, it doesn't matter. The biggest problem I have is the parking. In the Seaport area, you have, you require more parking on Main Street, we're reducing it. I think you should have more parking on Main Street just for the tourists and the workers, everybody else. Right now, it's a bulk standard.
That's again, a bulk standard. I'm asking for the master plan, where it is. Well, we've identified parking as an issue.
In a stricter sense, it doesn't comply with the master plan, in that the master plan, the ordinances are in the problem, which would come down to the CBD regulations, and I don't feel that it's exactly like the master plan, that it doesn't agree with the ordinances that are coming from the master plan. are coming from the master plan, in a stricter sense, I mean.
Who wants to vote now?
My major concern is the height of it and 30-foot setback next to the residence.
I, I'm more concerned about, I'm really concerned about the master plan.
The master plan is not in front of you this evening.
It's not in, in front right now, but I am concerned.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that we understand, the master plan is not before you this evening.
I, I realize that, but I'm trying to put it all into perspective, as, and understand it as best I can. I just have a problem, we have 50,000 people who come in here on a weekend, I don't care if we don't do any development, we still don't have any parking. So, again, we're gonna have a, a little bit more of a parking problem, but the height is what truly bothers me.
Yeah, no, it's my turn. In terms of the, the master plan and providing more open space, access to light for the properties, the street case, the street scape, that's basically refers to the landscaping and making the town green, and the overall parking issue as opposed to just the parking densities that the parking standards make it inconsistent with the plan.
Our last name?
That's it.
Much of what I heard was bulk standards, though, is that fair?
That's true, but my...
Just to be clear.
My, my determination, well, my charge, now, now that that vote is done, I have that, I know what I'm, I'm gonna ask the board to charge me with preparing a writing to mayor and council to capture those comments, that you have found it's inconsistent with the master plan, and also, and I'm assuming, you tell me if I'm wrong, and to still highlight all of the other bulk standards that were presented as a concern to mayor and council, so that they can have an understanding of it here. Again, so that no one, so that no one misunderstands, this plan is still in place, and the governing body can still approve this plan, you know, and I, and that's, and that's not against the planning board or members of the public, that is their prerogative to do that, okay?
And as the chairman will charge you with that responsibility of crafting that letter.
Thank you, sir. I will, I will, and I, and this leads us into another, another area that I, that I've been remiss in not discussing with the board. I will tell you that I will send you a draft of this writing. I'm going to make a notation that says, "Do not reply all." There is a reason I say, "Do not reply all." If you have a particular concern or comment, you are, you have the ability to speak to me. You will have my email, or you have all, or you have my phone, to call me. I do not want you to reply all, because in my view, even if none of you reply, that would be a violation of the open public meetings out there. It's okay if I were to send you something out, just like April sends you out, maybe a package, or a writing that you received, maybe as to some of our new members, as to why we've written, "Do not reply all," because if I have a forum of you going back and forth in email transmission, it begins to look like a meeting, a meeting that we haven't noticed, a meeting that we haven't told the public about, and a meeting that the public can't participate in. And I've been remiss in not having, not having this conversation with you before. I'm not admonishing anybody, I'm not scolding anybody, my fault for not having mentioned this in the past. But I will, and again, because this is, this is gonna be a working document, please, if you have a comment, or you think I've discharacterized, I'm not, I don't identify board members, you know, that Joe is telling, he's set the files, it's things. I don't, I don't do that, but I, but I wanna make sure I capture the flavor of the comments of that, and if you as an individual have some other concern, usually I work that out one way or the other. Rarely do I have someone say, "Don't mention this," and someone else say, "mention this." Do not reply all, send to me any comment that you have.
One question, will we have the opportunity to review and discuss the draft at our next meeting, before it's sent to mayor and council?
And that's up to who's in this next meeting.
Well, you're asking me to ask that question, because we won't have the opportunity for that.
Nearly.
I'll just ask you a question.
Seven thirds?
You don't have to agree, you have to be that one for council. Well, I, you may have...
I was having somebody say that.
If that's what you want.
No, I'm asking.
You can, you could. You can call a special meeting, it would require two days, and you notice, notice that.
We're asking you to craft a letter, based on what we told you.
I want you to see it.
It's my opinion, again, it's my opinion, reading it, getting back to you with our comments, having a special meeting.
Individual, yeah.
Correct, having a special meeting to review that, and see if you can capture your feeling, not necessarily, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I think it's our responsibility as board members to come back to you directly with comments. We will have the benefit of sharing that with one another, but it'll be your independent responsibility as a board member to come back. If you go direct, no, it doesn't.
That's almost your non-seeing people, having a dialogue with them, as far as I'm concerned, if for some reason April sent out a note to you and said, you know, you should send your package, and you're responding back to April, it's like, it's not attached, that's not a violation of the oath of duty, that. When you have a forum participating in a forum that other people can't reply with, that's a problem.
I just think clarity on, we're letting, we're, I'm sure you're creating, is vitally important, for this project to afford, and satisfy as much many citizens as possible, it needs some clarity, let's have a good, so maybe that's why we're interested in discussing.
Following Mr. Campbell's comments, it may not have us, have another meeting if you're satisfied that, right, and I have, and you have a dialogue.
If we, if we get back to you and say we're not satisfied with the draft, me individually, if I call you individually, and you agree with me, and something is added, at that point, the letter would then be sent to all the board again, to review again, and make another comment on you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so again, everybody's getting the updates, everybody would have it, I don't know that you need a meeting for it, in my opinion. As long as we communicate with you directly, and then at the end, we all agree on that draft with you individually, that serves the purpose of the meeting, I understand the importance of the draft, I think it is important, that's why I spoke on it, with the 30-foot setback and others, but again, all that being said, you have the right and the duty to talk to our attorney and do that individually, so.
And I like the fact that the turns will come back, if there are edits that are made, everyone will get a view of that, so I think it's probably the best of both worlds.
I think everybody should also respond, lie by me, and not just ignore it.
Yeah, I, I would like a response from the board.
You need to be empowered to report.
Yes.
Very good.
Don't just ignore it, it's fine.
Yeah, zero response is not necessarily acceptance.
You gotta say it's okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments before we close out?
The other business, into this one.
All right, can I have a motion to close the meeting? I'll make one.
Second.
A lot of seconds, I'll let you decide, John. All in favor?